The shop that I grew up in, they gave me an opportunity, so why not give back?
I always love art, like in any type of form. If it's drawing, tattoos, graffiti, haircuts, anything. So, once I turned sixteen, I got involved with the program. Uh, since then, I've been working here at the barber shop and learning new things.
He comes in, he helps out with a lot of just, you know, the basics from sweeping hair to standing behind.
Good afternoon and welcome to the October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three Agenda Review Meeting of the Orlando City Council. Um, Commissioners, the MPB meeting minutes are shown at Item C-two on the Consent Agenda. And there has been some additional staff discussion regarding the East Park Village Center Three project, which is MPB Item Number Eight, Case MPL twenty-three-one-zero-zero-five-two. And without objection, if there's no objection, I'm going to move this item to Consent Agenda. From Consent Agenda to New Business, but all the other C-two MPB items will remain on the Consent Agenda. And that's in District One, and I understand you're briefed up on that, Commissioner Gray. Okay. Ordinarily, we go right to, um, Public Participation, and we have somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty requests to participate on one of the items on the Consent Agenda, and that's Item B-seven relating to the purchase of the Pulse property. So, since normally there's not a lead-in, I'm just going to go ahead and give a brief introduction to that so that there is, um, some relevance set to the testimony that'll come before us. And we all know that on June the twelfth, twenty-sixteen, uh, we had a tragedy that occurred on that site, on that location where forty-nine angels were taken from us, a number of others were wounded. And certainly, our community and everyone related to that were wounded, if not physically, mentally, and spiritually and inspirationally. But we did not let that hateful act of a murder define our community. Instead, we have defined by our response, which has been with love and compassion and unity. And subsequent to the sixteenth, a couple of months later, the city sought to purchase that property to make sure that we could preserve it for a permanent memorial on that location. Um, at the time, we did enter into a contract with the owners for two-point-two-five million dollars. Later, the owners decided that they did not want to sell the property, and Barbara Palma formed the One Pulse Foundation, um, which sought to build a, or took on as their charge to build a permanent memorial as well as a museum related to Pulse. It's now been seven years into that effort. And while there has been a lot of work done, a lot of input taken, nothing has occurred to further the construction of a memorial on that site. Also, uh, Ms. Palma is no longer associated with the foundation, um, although, uh, she and her husband, the third party, still own the property. The One Pulse Foundation attempted to resolve that situation and purchase the site. Um, they could not come to a resolution. And several months ago, uh, One Pulse said that they were no longer pursuing that avenue and suggested the potential of building a memorial at a different location. A lot of people have, uh, including survivors and family members have, uh, let me know, uh, let us know, I think, that the community deserves, the forty-nine, and the families deserve to have a permanent memorial located on the site of the Pulse Foundation, of the Pulse location. At this point, I know of no other way to go about that, to ensure that that's going to happen if the city doesn't take control of that site. So, to that end, in the last couple of weeks, um, we have entered into a contract for purchase and sale, um, with the Palmas for two million dollars. That's about a hundred thousand dollars more than the appraised value, which is somewhere in the one-point-eight, one-point-nine million rate range. It's a couple hundred thousand less than, we had it under contract seven years ago. They, um, I think it is important that we gain control of the property and then decide how to create the permanent memorial. It is not very often that I bring something to the council that I don't have the whole plan laid out. Um, I know what the end result is going to be, and that's a permanent memorial at that location. There are other steps in between, so I can guarantee to you a lot of input and opportunity for input from families and people that are stakeholders, that are interested in this particular issue. I don't know whether One Pulse will remain involved. There's a lot of controversy related to that, um, but I can promise you that we will be totally transparent in whatever the next steps may be. But I think it is important, first step, for this council to vote to purchase that property. So, that will be before us on Consent Agenda. There are, Madam Clerk, I understand, is close to fifty requests to speak. So, we will endeavor to do that, and I will let the clerk handle, um, handle that part of it. We're going to maintain our regular system, which is state your name, your address, and then you'll have three minutes to address council. Um, there are some individuals who speak, uh, Spanish only that we have, uh, are going to provide an interpreter related to that, and Stephanie can go through how we're going to achieve that. Stephanie?
So, for those seeking interpreter assistance, if you can say your brief words, and then the interpreter will speak and interpret those languages, and then you can resume. So, as it stops and starts, we'll stop the timer as well, so you have your full three minutes.
Okay.
All right, up first is former Representative Carlos Guillermo Smith, followed by Keith Altman, and Zachary Blair.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Carlos Guillermo Smith. I'm a former state representative. I'm speaking before you today on my own behalf. But I also know that the sentiments I wish to convey reflect the wishes of many, many more in the community we know and love. The site of Pulse nightclub is sacred ground. The forty-nine lives stolen there on June twelfth, twenty-sixteen, most of them LGBTQ or Latino, must never be forgotten. They were taken by hate, and their loved ones need this sacred ground preserved as a space of peace, mourning, and reflection. Future generations need it preserved so that they can learn about the forty-nine angels, learn about what happened there, learn about how love and acceptance united our Orlando community in the aftermath of this tragedy. My fear is that without the city's intervention, the site will be paved over or profiteered in some way that disrespects the memory of the forty-nine angels. In my capacity as a lawmaker, I even secured state dollars for the purpose of building the memorial on this site. The idea of building it anywhere else is simply not acceptable to the vast majority of those impacted by this tragedy. Your action here today will avert that from happening. I personally believe the best way to ensure that the wants and needs of the Pulse families and survivors are respected is through public ownership, input, and control of the site. It will require transparency and accountability for the site's future plans, and I believe that the city is the best entity, best equipped, to be fully and truly accountable to the people and to this community who want to see the sacred ground preserved. We all hoped that the land would be donated without needing to spend taxpayer dollars on the acquisition. But this is the predicament that we are in. I am grateful for the city's leadership, for your intervention on this important issue, and ask you to support the purchase of this land. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Keith Altman via Zoom.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to speak before the council today. My name is Keith Altman. I represent a number of the individuals who were killed or wounded in the attack in a lawsuit against the Pulse nightclub. And let me begin by saying, with this horrible tragedy, a memorial is absolutely appropriate and should be done. But there is a problem. And the problem is that the ownership of this club is in question and should be considered by the council. Shortly after the attacks took place, the club, which was owned by nineteen-twelve, um, Orange Avenue Corp, was fraudulently transferred by the Palmas from the corporation, um, to themselves, which is clearly inappropriate. They'd already requested, um, assistance from their insurance company. They were fully unnoticed that there was a high likelihood of litigation, and they had sought help. Um, the ownership of the club is not clear, and we believe that the council, you know, while, while this is clearly an important task to be done, that the council should not, uh, be purchasing the club for the profit or whatever of the Palmas. We believe those funds belong to a number of the victims. And we think that the Palmas receiving these funds is a clear violation of well-established Florida law that says they should not have transferred the property, um, fraudulently as they did. And it is our understanding that the property was transferred from nineteen-twelve Corp. to the Palmas for approximately one hundred dollars, which was clearly to evade responsibility, where the club also had completely and totally inadequate insurance, given the density of individuals who were using the club on that evening. We urge the city council to consider, um, this question. Furthermore, the club itself is still very much evidence in an ongoing litigation, and that before anything can be done to the club, the issue about its, as an evidence item, needs to be addressed, and that nothing can be done with that club until such time as this takes place. In the end, this is a horrible tragedy, and something needs to be done. There is no doubt about it. But there is simply no way that the Palmas, who maintained inadequate insurance on the club to meet the needs of, of individuals who died or were severely wounded. We have one client who was in Columbia in a wheelchair. Um, his life has been destroyed. And so, we urge the city council to reconcile the ownership of the club before it makes any decisions. Thank you very much for your time.
Up next is Zachary Blair, followed by Georgia Hernandez Carrion, Keenan Carter, and George Avalos.
Hi, my name is Zachary Blair, Dolphine Lane, three-two-eight-zero-three. In addition to making money from their failed nonprofit, the One Pulse Foundation, the Palmas are now on track to take two million dollars in public money from the city of Orlando. While we fought against the exploitation of our own grief, the city chose to work against us and support Barbara Palma and the One Pulse Foundation instead. Buddy Dyer, the conflicts of interest between you, Earl Crittenden, and City Attorney Mayan Downs and the One Pulse Foundation are well documented. The city, this right here, the city gave me a list of issues that the city attorneys created as they prepared for civil or criminal litigation. The city originally gave me this, gave me this completely redacted in twenty-twenty, which was illegal, and I got it unredacted. It highlights capacity issues, unpermitted work, and other life safety violations that the city knew about. A lawsuit never came against the city because survivors had no idea these issues existed. Information was purposely kept away from the victims to cover the city's legal liability. There are still records that have not been released to us or the public. In twenty-nineteen, as we were calling for a public memorial and not a privatized spectacle, Patty Sheehan called me personally and told me to look into the public records. He told multiple people that, multiple people that unpermitted renovations hindered rescue, and that's one of the reasons why the response took a disgraceful three hours. After four and a half years and thousands of dollars spent on records, we found this to be true. We stand here to watch the responsible parties team up and put two million into the pockets of the Palmas while they both claim Pulse was up to code and without violations. This past week, the city told the media, Pulse did not have any life safety issues at the time of the shooting. This is false, and you all know it. The city called off a building inspection to document code violations after the shooting, and you know this. Pulse had an unpermitted fence. Survivors had to jump over to escape. There was no citation because of the owner's cozy relationship to the city, and you know this. Pulse was overcapacity on the night of the shooting, hindering people from getting out, and there was a pattern of Pulse being overcrowded, and you know this. Pulse had illegally walled over windows, which caused victims to run into bathrooms where they were trapped and brutalized for hours. Pulse was not permitted to operate as a nightclub, as shown in multiple documents. Rosario Palma even wrote a letter saying he had removed the unpermitted dance floor where twenty people were murdered, and you know this too. And there's more. A public memorial has always been the way to go, but not at the cost of accountability and justice for shooting victims. Do not allow this deal to go through. Stop lying to everyone, and ethically represent your constituency. And that should begin with you, Patty.
Up next is Georgia Hernandez Carrion via Zoom, followed by Keenan Carter.
Hola, buenas tardes. Hola, buenas tardes. Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es George Hernandez Carrion.
Good afternoon. My name is Joshua Hernandez Carrion.
Me dispararon dos veces. Todavía tengo cirugías, una bala en mi cuerpo. Todos los días es una lucha y todos los días tengo que luchar por lo que es correcto. Se suma al estrés que se pone en mi cuerpo y en mi mente. Hoy la ciudad me está obligando a estar aquí y luchar por lo que es correcto. Queremos un monumento público, pero si, pero si eso significa que la ciudad enriquecerá aún más los Poma, dando la propia, los, los propietarios de Pulse dos millones de dólares por la propiedad. Barbara Palma se ha beneficiado personalmente de mi dolor, incluso cuando está siendo demandada. Ella ha fingido ser nuestra amiga, nuestra aliada, y nuestra defensora.
Señor Hernandez, un momento.
Okay.
Sí, Hernandez, voy a proceder a interpretar. Ah, por favor, después de cada treinta segundos, le pido que, por favor, pare para que podamos hacerlo en inglés, okay?
Okay.
Um, I got shot that night twice. I had to have surgery for those, um, for that issue, and I still have one of the bullets in my body. This is a fight that I have every day because of what happened to me, and also a fight to do what is correct. This adds up to the stress that I am going through with my body and my mind. And now it's time for the city to fight for what is correct. We are asking for a public monument, um, but it's also time for the city to look what happened with the millions that were used for this, and also for who is guilty of all of this. Because there are people that benefited from all the pain that we went through. Puede continuar.
Barbara Palma se ha beneficiado personalmente de mi dolor, incluso cuando está siendo demandada. Ella ha fingido ser nuestra amiga, nuestra aliada, y nuestra defensora. Ella nunca fue ninguna de estas cosas. Ella ha viajado por todo el mundo y ha sido celebrada como una víctima del tiroteo, mientras que nosotros, las víctimas reales, seguimos entrando y saliendo de los hospitales.
There are people that benefited from my personal pain. Even this person said that she was, uh, one of us, our ally, our, um, the person that would defend us. She was not any of this. She traveled all over the world, and she was recognized as the, as a victim of the shooting when it was us, the people that were going in and out of the hospital because of this. Puede continuar.
Okay. Tengo que ir a sala de emergencia para atenderme porque no tengo seguro médico. Porque a otro lado, los Poma recibieron un pago del seguro. La Fundación One Pulse pensó que no era ético darle fondos adicionales para la propiedad. Porque la ciudad cree que ahora es apropiado pagarle este dinero.
Por favor, voy a necesitar que repita una vez más lo que dijo.
Okay. Okay. Tengo que ir a sala de emergencia para atenderme porque no tengo seguro. Por otro lado, los Poma recibieron un pago del seguro. La Fundación One Pulse pensó que no era ético darle fondos adicionales para lo, para la propiedad porque la ciudad cree que ahora es apropiado pagarle a este dinero.
Gracias. Um, I went to the ER to be seen several times, and all of this without, uh, health insurance because I don't have one. Um, and also, the art, there were others that got money because of all of this, and the organization One Pool thought that it was not ethic to be giving points to the property, and now this is a problem that the city has. Continúe, por favor.
A pesar de, a pesar de nuestras luchas diarias, no nos hemos organizado, hemos luchado, y hemos dicho la verdad al poder. No me quedo, no me quedo de pies y dejaré que la ciudad mienta sobre lo que sabemos que es verdad. No dejaré que los Poma ni nadie más se beneficien de nuestro dolor. No se deben poner más fondos públicos en sus manos. Ya es suficiente. Gracias y buenas tardes.
Even though, um, we know that this is a daily fight, we were able to get organized, and we were able to say what is true. Um, it's time for you to stop and for the city to stop lying about what happened and to start telling the truth. Because no one else will benefit from our pain, and it's time for the city to stop having public funding. Thank you very much, and have a good afternoon.
Up next is Keenan Carter, followed by George Avalos. Okay, moving on. George Avalos. Up next is Carmen, um, Carmen Capo. Up next is Carmen Capo, followed by Shieba de Jesús and Stefan Tomlinson.
Buenas tardes. ¿Me escuchan?
Sí, buenas tardes.
Mi nombre es Carmen Capo. Soy la madre de Luis Omar Ocasio-Capó. Víctima de Pulse de veinte años.
My name is Carmen, uh, Capo, and I am the mother of Luis Omar Ocasio-Capó, one of the victims, um, at Pulse with twenty years.
Hoy estamos aquí porque no estoy de acuerdo con la venta del club. No estoy de acuerdo con que eso se haga un museo. Yo quiero para mi hijo y para las otras cuarenta y ocho víctimas, un memorial donde todas nosotras y todo el mundo que quiera ir, ahí pueda ir gratuitamente, sin ningún problema. Pero no estoy de acuerdo con un museo porque mi hijo no va a ser otra atracción más de Florida. Y por eso no estoy de acuerdo con que vendan, le den esos dos millones a la señora Palma. Y al señor Palma, no estoy de acuerdo. Nunca fui notificada, y no, nunca fui notificada ni a mí ni a mis hijos, ni a mi familia sobre esto, de esta venta. No estoy de acuerdo, y quiero que esto conste. Y quiero que hagan una investigación a los señores Palma. Y quiero también, que no quiero, que hasta que nos haga una investigación en el club, lo demuelan o lo rompan. Gracias. Que pasen buenas tardes, y espero que nos ayuden y que nuestra voz se escuche, por favor. Ya está, ya es hora de que nos hagan justicia a nosotros y a las cuarenta y nueve víctimas y a los sobrevivientes que tanto lo necesitan. Buenas tardes y gracias.
Here they am here because I want to let you know that I do not agree with, uh, selling the club so we can get a museum. I want my son and the other forty-eight victims to have a memorial. So, whenever we want to go, and everybody that wants to go can go there, and it has to be for free. But we do not want a museum. I don't want my son to be part of money that Florida would get because of a disgrace. So, uh, I am not agreeing to selling the club to Mrs. and Mr. Palma. I was never notified, nor my children, nor our family, that the land was being sold. And I want the city to be aware that we want an investigation. We want them to be investigated, and we also want an investigation for the club itself and why everything happened. And if that's not going to happen, we want a demolition of the place. Thank you very much, and have a good afternoon. Right now, what we want is our voice to be heard, and it's time to see some justice for the forty-nine victims that we had that day. Thank you very much, and have a good day.
Up next is Shielah de Jesús on Zoom, followed by Stefan Tomlinson via Zoom.
Por favor, puede quitarle el silencio a su micrófono para poderla escuchar.
Señora de Jesús.
Señora de Jesús, por favor, quite el silencio al micrófono para que la podamos escuchar. Vamos a intentar una vez más, la vamos a intentar llamar después de la próxima persona. Gracias.
Up next is Stefan Tomlinson via Zoom. Stefan Tomlinson, if you can speak into the mic. Okay, we're going to move on to the next speaker. If he's able to resolve his technical issues, we'll call him up. Up next is Olga Disla.
Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Olga Disla, y soy la madre de Anthony Luis Laureano. El propósito de mi presencia aquí hoy es solicitar respetuosamente que puedan adquirir el terreno donde está ubicada la... que puedan adquirir el terreno donde está ubicada el nightclub Pulse, donde fue la tragedia que hace siete años murieron 49 personas y otras fueron heridas, gravemente heridas algunas de ellas. Durante todo este tiempo hemos estado esperando por la construcción de un memorial donde puedan ser honrados y recordados nuestros queridos familiares. Sin embargo, en todo este tiempo, a pesar de las promesas que se hicieron para poder tener este memorial, esto no ha sido así. Originalmente era primero un memorial y luego entonces trataron de hacer adicionar un museo. Yo entiendo que un museo no es necesario. Lo que sí es necesario es el memorial. Un museo resultaría costoso para la ciudad, tardaría muchísimo más tiempo. Y sobre todo, lo más importante aquí es tener ese memorial para que los sobrevivientes y las familias y todas las personas que quieran recordar y elevar una oración puedan hacerlo, personas de todo el mundo, porque esto fue una tragedia que impactó todo el mundo. Aparte de la ciudad de Orlando ser conocida por los parques de Disney, también es conocida como un lugar donde ocurrió esta gran tragedia que nos conmovió a todos. Estoy segura que ustedes están bien. Todavía el día de hoy, nosotras, las madres, familiares cercanos, los amigos de estos jóvenes siguen llorando su partida porque fue inesperada. Súbitan. Y es también un recuerdo de que la violencia que existe aquí en este país, en nuestro país, porque yo estación Puerto Rico, pero también soy sudadana americana, no debe de ocurrir. Es un recuerdo perenne de que esto no puede volver a ocurrir y que ustedes como comisionados estoy segura que proveerán las herramientas para que esto no vuelva a ocurrir y sobre todo que sea recordado. Pero también se debe establecer las prioridades de una posible reinvestigación para estar seguros de que todo esto es así. Gracias.
Good afternoon. My name is Olga Isla. My son was Anthony Luis Isla. And I'm here to respectfully ask to get the property where Pulse was located and where seven years ago 49 people died and some of them were really, really hurt. We've been wanting a memorial to honor and remember the victims of that day. However, it's been a long time already and we've been given promises, but nothing has happened. First, we talked about the memorial and we were offered that. And then the museum was added to the plans. However, a museum is not something that we need. What we need is a memorial. A museum would cost a lot of money and it would take even more time than an actual memorial. And that is why we wanted the memorial. So family members and friends can go there and pray for the people that we lost that day, even people around the world, because this situation was known around the world. Florida is not only known for Disney, it's also known for this big tragedy. And it has been said to everyone that knew about it, even for you. What we need is that family and friends can go somewhere to cry for the death of their loved ones. Because this experience, the death of these people was unexpected and it is a reminder of the violence that we live in this country, in our country. And I say it is our country because I am from Puerto Rico, but I'm also a US citizen. This is a reminder that we have to stop the situation in the country and I know that you will provide the tools so this doesn't happen again. We want to make sure that this is a reminder that we shouldn't invest on the museum and also to avoid this happening again in the future. Thank you.
Up next is Maritza Gómez, followed by Tierra Parker and María Soto.
I'm nervous right now. So my name is Maritza Gómez. I'm a survivor of Pulse. And I just want the truth to come out. I don't think that Pulse should be demolished. I think the investigation should be taken care of first. They should look into everything that happened in Pulse before anything else happens. A memorial is great, but it shouldn't be feed. Nobody wants to go to Pulse to pay, to see their families and friends. Nobody. I lived that night. But it's a constant sacrifice to keep moving every day. We want the truth to come out because we ain't lying. There were so many violations in that place. In Pulse nightclub, there was violations. I want everyone, as a survivor, wants an investigation in Pulse before you turn it down, before anything else happens to that Pulse, to Pulse, period. I want the investigation to get done because the truth needs to come out. This tragedy lives with me seven and a half years and I feel like it was yesterday. It hurts my heart to know that the city of Orlando, that Bulma Palmer, her family has been pocketing, getting rich over us, who really lived that night, the tragedy and the headache and the mental health that we have to go through. I want the investigation to get done. I want the truth to come out. After that, you can do with Pulse and make the memorial that it needs to be there past seven and a half years. It needs to be memorialized. Forty-nine lives, forty-nine of my friends are not here anymore. Forty-nine of my friends that I party with are not here anymore, that I can't even call them to say, hey, what's up? So it really hurts me to know that this is going on. Boba Puma and her family do not need no $2 million. They pocket enough. Thank you.
Tierra Parker via Zoom, followed by María Soto. If you can please unmute your device.
I just want to make sure everyone can hear me.
Can you repeat that one more time?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure everyone can hear me.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Tierra Parker. I am a survivor of the Pulse nightclub shooting. I'm currently in Philadelphia at the moment. However, I definitely wanted to make sure that I gave my two cents on this. It's been seven and a half years and I have been dealing on the back end with like the emotional trauma this has caused by itself, but also the physical ones. I lost my cousin Akira Monet Murray. I am the biological cousin of Akira Monet Murray. She was my best friend and everything else. She died in my lap that night. I constantly have to find myself coming to Florida to kind of speak with you, whether it's someone in the city or the media about the same things that are going on. I'm going to continue to fight for a criminal investigation when it comes down to the club, because the amount of money that's been passed around with this club and what's been going on is ridiculous and we still have yet to see anything. The amount of money that was been moved around, gained, raised, not a single victim, survivor, family, nobody has seen it. And it's kind of heartbreaking because now, seven and a half years later, y'all are ready to buy, now y'all want to buy the club to give it the proper memorial when this could have been done years ago. We have wasted way too much time. Barbara and Rosario have done nothing but made that a cash grab and which we completely understand that this building is theirs by law. However, there were so many things they did just to keep it illegally. And I'm not understanding why. This is public record in the city. All of you know about this. Y'all can see these things. These are legal documents that I pulled from the city of Orlando and I'm not understanding why now all of a sudden, let's try to maybe play the right thing, do the right thing and be the right person in this circumstance. It does not make any sense. It doesn't even make sense to even be in this predicament in the first place, given the circumstance. You started off wanting to support victims in this tragedy, but then you turned this into cash grabs. I'm not a meal ticket. This has been a complete spit to the face. It's frustrating. Now y'all want to buy it and now y'all, it's seven and a half years later, you think somebody want to keep having this conversation? I'm only going to approve of this if the survivors have something to do with this entire process and not just 100% transparency, but also having someone that is a survivor sit with y'all in this process as well. Because it's clear that the city of Orlando cannot be trusted and neither can the Pumas. I'm done.
Next is María Soto via Zoom, followed by Sally Arriese, Carlos Sanfeliz and Michael Wallace. Ms. Soto, if you can please unmute your device.
Por favor, señora Soto, quita el silencio al micrófono para que la podamos escuchar.
Sí, muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es María Soto, mamá de Luis Conde. ¿Me escuchan?
Sí, la podemos escuchar, por favor, continúe.
Sí, muy buenas tardes. Mi nombre es María Soto, madre de uno de los víctimas que han fallecido. Donde estoy entendiendo, ¿verdad?, que realmente estas víctimas que están ahora mismo sufriendo, sufriendo el ataque que hubo ahí, realmente donde ellos lo llevan día a día. Nuestros hijos ya partieron, pero se están ibrolocando de nuestros hijos. Y yo creo que no es justo. Y yo estoy de acuerdo de que ese monumento sea ahí, porque ahí fue que sucedió lo que sucedió. Y también no estoy de acuerdo que le den ese dinero a ella, porque realmente Puma realmente se ha brolocado con todos y con cada uno de nosotros. Yo digo, basta ya. Escuchen nuestra voz, porque nadie sabe lo que estamos viviendo. Muchas gracias.
My name is María Soto. I am the mother of one of the victims that died that day. And what I understand is that the victims of the victims of that day that were in the attack, right now, the families are suffering. And we're suffering because of them every day. My son might have left and all of these people might have left, but we are still here dealing with it every day. And what I'm understanding is that money is being gotten from all of this. I do agree that we have a monument there where Pulse was, because that's where everything happened. And I do not agree that we give money to her, because she already benefited from all of us. It's time to stop already all of this and to stop doing all of this with what happened. Thank you.
Next is Sally Arriese.
Good afternoon. My name is Sally Arriese. Juan Guedes was my brother, one of the 49. I believe that we are confusing the issues in the sense that people with grief decide to, everyone deals with grief differently, but we're missing the issue after what is that we're here for right now. Putting the blame in the wrong place, I don't think helps anyone. That property belongs to the Pumas and they should be allowed to do with it as they please. If they want to sell it to the city of Orlando to do a memorial, I do believe is the right thing. Because if there is going to be a memorial, it should be where it happened. I completely disagree with not being paid for something that's yours. So I am for the sale and I hope that you do sell it and that it does, that you do buy it and that it does become a memorial the right way. Thank you.
Next on Zoom is Carlos Sanfeliz.
Hello. We can hear you, Carlos. Okay, perfect. Hi, my name is Carlos Sanfeliz. I want to thank you for giving me the chance to speak, most of all. I am a parent of one of the victims that died at Pulse. I am in favor of the city buying the site. My son was Christopher Sanfeliz and he was a good-hearted, amazing son that was loved by everyone. His life was taken at this site in a horrendous way, we all know. I feel that the site is where the memorial should be, not anywhere else. I hear about moving the memorial somewhere else and I feel the pain inside when I hear that. Because the Pulse site is where the 49 took their last breath. It's where my son took his last breath. I cannot imagine going somewhere else. I feel because of how this happened, my son has two resting places and one is this site and has been for seven years. As a parent, I feel this and I am sure there are many parents and family members that do. I hear that there are some people against this and the reason I hear is that someone is making money from the sale or one is a survivor and he doesn't have money for a medical bill or a few that don't even have a child or a family member that died there. And they are fighting another fight that has nothing to do with this memorial being on this site. One thing I want to say, the Pumas own it and they deserve their money, period. I personally would like to tell all these people, think, what does this have to do with this being the memorial site? I am asking to please make it the memorial site as it was intended to be when it was written as a national memorial, which is part of Orlando history now. I live this pain of losing my child every day and having to go through this still seven years later does not help. So I am asking, no, I am pleading with you. Please help to make this site the memorial as it should be. Thank you very much.
Up next is Michael Wallace, followed by Marlene Alonso, Brett Riegas and Andrea Drayton. Michael Wallace, if you're on Zoom, if you can please raise your hand. Up next is Marlene Alonso on Zoom. Brett Riegas.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Brett Riegas. I've lived in Orlando since 2002. I went to college here. I have a career here and this has been my life in Orlando for more than half of my life. The night of Pulse, I was there. I lost my partner that night. I believe that this sale needs to happen. I agree with a lot of these. I agree with a lot of these people that are in this room right now with, it doesn't, I mean, I don't think it matters who gets the money right now. I think what matters is that this is built by the city and we can put this to rest. I mean, we could sit here all day. We have people in this room that continue to preach how the Pumas are profiting on the sale and beg for investigations that have already been done. We've already paid for these investigations. I mean, what cost is that going to be? And these are the same people that are opening frivolous lawsuits and things like that against the Pumas. Right now, this needs to be taken out of this completely and this site needs to be built with a memorial. This is where it belongs. It does not belong in the site next door. It belongs where this happened. So please take that into account when you guys make this decision. Thank you.
Up next is Andrea Drayton, followed by Matthew Viera Briggs, followed by Cecily Lealy Santiago Leon. Andrea Drayton, if you're on Zoom, if you can please raise your hand. Matthew Viera Briggs. Cecily Lealy Santiago Leon, if you can please unmute your device.
She's here.
Hello, good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Siklali Mari Santiago Leon. I also go by Lali. And my beautiful cousin, primo hermano, Luis Daniel Wilson Leon, or better known as Danny. It's one of the victims at Pulse. He, one of the 49. And I'm here because I wanted to say firstly, thank you. I think it is important that we do keep the memorial at the site. There should not be any, I don't see any logical reason or financial reason to even move it elsewhere, but it is hallowed ground. I'm sorry, this is, this is one long day that continues. I feel that if we can move in the right direction, where we can all come together and because there's a lot of us that have different emotions and feelings about it and that we can all just come together and keep the site there, not move it. It's hallowed ground, kind of just, and allow for, and this is a personal, for me to have my second day, my real day, because it hasn't stopped. And so, and I know that this is for a lot of people that are here as well. And although we may not, many of us signed letters and we thank you for taking the time, they may not be as high as others, but we're all impacted. I understand that. Let us have this opportunity to work towards making something good out of this. And even if the building itself, as has been reported, there are structural issues and we don't know where we're going to go. This is the best spot. We're starting. We're having a dialogue. Let us continue with that. And I think we should all, and I'm not talking about just the victims, because everyone matters. The survivors matter. You all matter. And as a community, we came together. We want to forge that ahead. The 49 are the root. We want this to blossom forward and continue. And I just wanted to say thank you.
Up next is Mayra Albeir, followed by Damaris Benitez Torres, Nelly Benitez Torres and Sarah Bradley or Brady. Mayra?
My angels are here. Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer and council members. My name is Mayra Lisette Albeir. I'm the mother of one of the Pulse Angels, my sweet baby Amanda Lisette Albeir. Since late 2016, I have worked tirelessly and have been part of every step of the memorial process. I have wanted this to happen for our angels and devoted my heart and soul to this. And I will not stop until I see this true. This past August, I was part of a group of several families and survivors who sent a letter to both our county and city mayors. We were reaching out for their help in what it is an incredibly personal and emotional request. We seek for compassion and help to ensure that the site of the tragedy of the Pulse nightclub serves as the proper and only location for the memorial. We ask for their help to protect the memories of our loved ones at the site where their lives were taken. No other location makes sense to honor the ones we love. As surviving, family members of the 49 Angels who lives were taken on June 12, 2016 at Pulse nightclub, we believe it is important that their memories and their legacies be preserved and protected. Both Mayor Demings and Mayor Dyer responded to us and the conversation we have give us hope. Imagine the relief when the city announced that they wanted to acquire the club. We felt like a heavy burden had been lifted from our hearts. We could breathe again and we are imploring that the purchase will get your approval. Everything I've done has been for the love of all our angels. It's time for unity, for our angels, our survivors, our first responders. The memorial needs to be at the place where it happened. The place where people from all over come and pay their respects. They leave notes, they leave flowers, they leave personal items. We have collected toys for our community. We have spread love and hugs. Share tears, share stories, a place where people come together. The people I meet when I visit fill me with hope that our loved ones will be remembered even after I'm gone. The peace and serenity of the place allows me to feel the presence of my angels. They let us know on several occasions with rainbow signs, which we all know these. For me specifically, it's a place that keep me close to my baby. We need a place to honor our loved ones, a place of love. It has been a long, strenuous, painful journey and I beg you, we need our sacred ground protected and for it to be a place where we can come and share our love stories. They are not just the name on a plaque. And this can only happen if the city acquires the property that has been designated a national memorial. As parting, we want our best for our children and that's what I want for my daughter and for our angels. My husband, my family and I plead the council to approve the purchase. Don't let the one at fault, the perpetrator get away with it more than the act he committed. Let's stop the hate. Thank you.
Thank you. It's 2 o'clock and we need to convene our city council meeting. So what we're going to do is we're going to, without objection, recess the agenda review meeting. We're going to call the other meeting to order, call the roll, do one piece of business and then we'll recess that meeting and come back and conclude the public comment. This section, I think we're only about, Madam Clerk, maybe a third of the way through.
Yes, Mayor, will you also want to do the proclamation now?
We'll do the proclamation in the city council meeting. That's the one order of business. Okay, well, we're only going to do that one item of business and then recess. So really, Priscilla is the only one we probably need. Oh, okay. For that, okay. Okay.
So basically. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to the October 23, 2023 meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin the proceedings with the invocation and pledge led today by Commissioner Tony Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's bow our heads. Lord God, we thank you for this day, for your mercy and grace. We know that you're listening to us. We ask you, guide us and bless us with wisdom as we seek for quality of life, peace and tranquility for our people. We ask you all this in the precious name of the Father, the Son and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And I do without doubt wish you one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to call a meeting. Would you order, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll and make the termination of the quorum, please?
Commissioner Gray.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Shan.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Burns.
Here.
Mayor Dyer.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum with all members present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's take up for consideration the minutes of the workshop agenda review. City council meetings of October 9, 2023, motion by Commissioner Hill. Second by Commissioner Shan, all in favor indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Okay, so the motion carries. Do two quick items of business. So this is a little different than we normally handle things, but we had an agenda review meeting where people can comment on the consent agenda. And one of the items on the consent agenda has a probably a couple hours worth of testimony. And we've done the first hour or so. I want to convene this meeting in honor of Priscilla and just mention the other people that are in the audience today. And then we're going to recess and go back to the agenda review meeting. So if you're here for some things that are later on in the council meeting, it's probably not going to be for another hour or so. So this coming, two Saturdays from now on November 11th, we will hold our Veterans Day parade. And I want to invite the entire community out for that. It's always a tremendous event as we honor and remember our veterans. The parade is the initiative of our Veterans Advisory Council. And today we are honoring someone who has helped to ensure that the group has been incredibly impactful. We have a very active group that conducts four different events during the course of the year. And our leader has been with us for a number of years. And I'm going to ask Dave Arnett, who is our liaison to that committee, to introduce this recognition.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners. Orlando is home to thousands of military veterans. Those veterans and their families made incredible sacrifices to serve our country. For this reason and many more, it's important that we continue to identify, honor and serve the needs of Orlando's veterans. That's where the Mayor's Veterans Advisory Council plays a critical role. With representatives from dozens of veterans and military organizations, the group works to make Orlando the most veteran-friendly city in the country. For the last five years, Priscilla Caligun has volunteered her time and talent to lead the council. She has been a leading advocate for our community's veterans and represented the city of Orlando at countless events. She's an amazing and true leader. I can testify to that. I've worked closely with her and she is great. Priscilla has passed the gavel to Michael Adams, who Mayor Dyer recently appointed as the new chair for the council. Michael is following in the footsteps of a wonderful leader, but we're all looking forward to continuing to work with him. Mayor, if you could please read a proclamation and recognize Priscilla. Then we'll get some photos with you and the Commissioners with Priscilla and then Michael and members of Veterans Advisory Council.
Rose Priscilla Caligun served our nation during an 18-year career with the U.S. Army Reserve, including during Operation Enduring Freedom. She served as a military police officer, led soldiers in missions while helping the Army face conflicts and challenges.
face conflicts and challenges, and whereas Priscilla turned home and became a program director for Heart of Florida United Way, where she led and directed projects to serve veterans, she currently works for Lockheed Martin. And whereas Priscilla's passion and advocacy for helping veterans thrive has always been apparent, in twenty-eighteen, she became the chairperson for the City of Orlando's Veterans Advisory Council, and whereas Priscilla made history as the first female leader for the group, guiding it for almost five years. She helped the council almost double its membership after the pandemic, ensuring that the volunteer group continued to identify, honor, and serve the needs of Orlando's veterans, and stand where as Priscilla managed Veterans Advisory Council's events and initiatives like the Veterans Day Parade and POW MIA Recognition Ceremony, and whereas Priscilla's leadership has positively and permanently impacted our city's veteran community, played a key role in our collective efforts to shape Orlando into the most veteran-friendly city in the nation, and whereas the City of Orlando is forever grateful for Priscilla's selfless service to our country and her service to our community's veterans through her leadership on our Veterans Advisory Council. Now therefore, we, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando, and the entire City Council do hereby proclaim October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, as Priscilla Caligian Day in the City of Orlando. Okay, council chambers filled up, and I think I know why, because there are a number of funding agreements on the agenda today. That always attracts a crowd, and I'd just like to highlight a few of these, because I don't know if everybody's going to stay the entirety of the time. Uh, first is the Healthcare Center for the Homeless Hope Team and Compassion Center, which is a service of First Pres Church located at the Christian Service Center. Second, Community Partners who drive our economic growth and activity, providing resources for minority-owned businesses, entrepreneurs, startup, including uh, Black Business Development Corp., Central Florida Social Enterprise Accelerator, Go Sports, Florida Citrus Sports, the UCF Research Foundation, Prospera, National Center for Simulation, Starter Studio, and of course, our Main Streets, and lastly, we're investing four point three million dollars in grant rewards, awards to fifty-eight additional not-for-profits that provide um, areas of community service, arts, and cultural organizations. So if you are representing one of those organizations or on our grant review committee, would you please stand and be recognized? Okay, I can assure you that we are going to pass those grants on consent agenda, but that's going to occur in about an hour and a half, probably, so we definitely appreciate your support. We appreciate you coming and showing your appreciation for those grants. We appreciate the great work that you do in our community, but if you don't want to stay for the next ninety minutes, that's okay. You certainly can stay. We're having the interesting discussion on the, uh, purchase of the land where the Holt's Memorial would be located, uh, very important work, and it's going to take a while to do, so we understand you didn't come for that particular item, you came to show your appreciation, so you are free to, um, make your way out if you so desire, and we'll take about a one-minute recess, and then we're going to reconvene the other meeting.
This Torres and Sarah Brad- Brady. Damaris Benitez Torres, if you can unmute your device.
Buenas tardes, soy Damaris Benitez Torres. Me escuchan?
Sí, un momento, por favor.
La escucho, señorita Torres.
Buenas tardes, soy Damaris Benitez Torres. Soy hermana de Martín Benitez Torres.
Good afternoon, my name is, uh, Benitez Torres. I am the sister of Manuel Benitez Torres.
Perdón, Martín Benitez Torres.
Martín Benitez Torres.
La cual tristemente falleció en la discoteca Pools.
Who sadly, uh, uh, was deceased at the, uh, at the, uh, Pool Discoteque.
Esa noche, del doce de junio del dos mil doce.
That night on June, uh, the second of, uh, twenty.
Perdón, dos mil dieciséis. Ay, Dios mío.
Cannot hear.
Perdón, doce de junio del dos mil dieciséis.
I apologize, June, uh, the twelfth, two thousand sixteen.
Con mucho respeto, estoy aquí para pedirles con mucha empatía y solidaridad que nos apoyen.
With all respect, I would like to come to you and ask you, uh, are you, uh, uh, backing us up?
Ya que esta tragedia fue hace siete años y estamos todavía esperando qué ha sucedido, donde está.
About seven years ago, and we're still waiting to see what's going to happen.
Nos prometieron muchas cosas, eh, la fundación One Pool, Pool Foundation, y.
We were promised many things, the, uh, uh, one. Eh, no la escuché señorita?
One Pool Foundation.
One Pool Foundation.
Y también la propietaria de la discoteca, la señora Bárbara Poma.
And then also the, uh, property area, the owner of the, uh, discoteque, Mrs. Barbara Pool.
Nos prometieron un museo.
We were promised a museum.
La cual nunca estuvimos de acuerdo.
Which we never agreed on.
Ya que han recibido por tantos años fondos públicos, donaciones.
Since we have been receiving for so long, uh, public, uh, uh, resources and donations.
Y actualmente nunca se vio nada, nunca nos dijeron nada.
And, uh, right now, nothing has, uh, has been said, and, uh, we have not been told anything.
En adicción, nos prometieron que la discoteca iba a ser el memorial, la cual, donde fue la tragedia, y lo iban a donar para hacer un memorial en honor a ellos.
And, uh, we were also told that the discoteque was going to be turned into a memorial, and it was going to be donated in their memory.
Todo ha sido un misterio, ya que hemos buscado respuesta y aún todavía estamos esperando.
It's all been a mystery since we've all, since we've been looking for an answer, and, uh, we're still waiting.
Necesito encarecidamente que hagan una investigación para ver.
I, I need that you please do an investigation.
Ya que esto es un dolor que nosotras.
Since this is a pain that we.
Es un dolor que tenemos mi mamá, mi hermana, yo, toda la familia de Martín.
That we all have, my mother, myself, uh, all Martín's family.
La cual entendemos que se han lucrado con su imagen, su nombre.
And, uh, as far as I understand, if it, uh, was to be, uh, uh, operated, it would be under her name or on her name.
Para ellos beneficiarse, ya que aún estamos esperando por ese memorial.
Since we're still waiting for that memorial.
Exijo una investigación.
I asked for an investigation, I demand an investigation.
Y actualmente no estoy de acuerdo, ni mi familia, ni yo, acá en Puerto Rico, no estamos de acuerdo que de, demoler la estructura por el momento hasta que se haga una investigación.
And, uh, we, my family and I, my mother here in Puerto Rico, are not agree in demolishing the building and starting a new construction.
Ya que no va, ya que no va, ya que no va a haber nada, ni memorial, ni museo, ni nada monetario que devuelva la vida de nuestro hermano, que es un dolor que hemos llevado por siete años.
Since nothing is going to be left there, there's not going to be a memorial, there's not to be, there's not to be a place uh, uh, to remember our, uh, beloved ones, and, uh, it's going to be gone. Continua señora.
Lo que queremos es paz tanto para nosotros como para las demás familias que estamos con este dolor.
For ourselves and, uh, the other families.
Y justicia.
And justice.
Muchas gracias desde Puerto Rico.
Thank you very much from Puerto Rico.
Up next is Nellie Benitez Torres.
Mi hermana.
Buenas tardes, señorita.
Nellie Benitez Torres, if you may, unmute your device. Sarah Brady.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer and council members. Uh, my name is Sarah Brady. I was born and raised here in the city of Orlando. As some of you know, I work with Barbara and Rosario Palma, owners of Pulse nightclub. Today I speak for myself. I'm not here on behalf of the Palmas. Uh, up until a few minutes ago, they didn't know I was coming. I'm here to thank you for your decision to purchase the site, ensuring and protecting its future as a memorial to the forty-nine lives that were taken in a terrorist attack in our beautiful city. On the morning of June twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, the entire country was shattered when we all awoke and watched what had happened overnight at Pulse. Within hours of this tragedy, I saw firsthand how this diverse city came together to show the world that hate is not tolerated here. Mayor Dyer, your leadership and that of your extraordinary team of professionals was tested, and all of you rose to the occasion. It has been a very long seven years since the effort to create a permanent memorial began. Just like everyone else, the Poma family was traumatized, but they knew early on that their beloved club site should be preserved as a place for remembrance, honor, and healing. I know that because I've been with them from the beginning of this nightmare. It's no secret that the road to where we are today had a few potholes, but here we are. Unfortunately, also along the way, much has been said and written about the Palmas. Some are misrepresentations, um, inaccuracies, inaccuracies, and misleading the public about their character and their intent, mostly by people who don't know them, um, and certainly don't know them as ordinary small business owners or the decent people they have always been. All Barbara and Rosario ever did was create a unique and special gathering place for the LGBTQ plus community, which Pulse nightclub was for over a decade, until a stranger destroyed it all in just a matter of minutes. Neither the Palmas nor the city is responsible for what happened at Pulse. At all. It was one man, a terrorist, who planned and killed so many in an instant in that sweet little club. So here we are today. Thanks to your leadership and this city's character and culture of compassion, the forty-nine angels, surviving victims, and their grieving loved ones can look to the future and a place for healing. Thank you for standing up for hope and for love.
Up next is Brenda Campos Marquez, followed by Sandra Wade and Barbara Fraser. Ms. Marquez, if you can please unmute your device.
Good afternoon. Let me just, just. Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you, but can you please remove us from speakerphone?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear them now. Okay. I am the cousin of Brenda Marcus McColl, who was murdered on that dance floor, and the cousin of Casey and her son Isaiah. I do not agree with the city giving any more money to the Palmas. They have taken enough from my family. Yes, Mrs. Brady, the city has rose. Yes, decent people are not supposed to break the law. I am also asking the mayor, the city council, and to be honest, and forthcoming about the known violations of Pulse, which you have denied till no end. The city needs to stop gaslighting. The city needs to stop gaslighting the media and giving them misinformation. We can read, we have records, you're not pulling the wool over our eyes. We know exactly what's going on. Why is the city paying the Pulse owners more than the property is worth? What happened to the Palmas donating their share? Why do we have to trust the city when the city has failed to help the Palmas accountable for all their decently breaking the law and codes and violations and regulations? Why should we trust you? Why? Why is this not happening now that the city is buying? If you think we're stupid because we speak with an accent, you're sorely mistaken. We have been ignored, discriminated, bullied upon, lied to, used, but we are done. We're going to be present every single day. This is not your moment to be our white saviors or you're the hero. We're not going away. A public memorial should have been the goal seven and a half years ago. We're in this position because you allowed this to happen. Have you held Barbara accountable? Have you held your own city accountable? Full of lies, deceits, and given us the runaround. Do you want to see? Can you put me on camera so I can show you your own papers? And how the city ignored totally the violations hindering the escape of many people? You are just to me full of bull. So let's see if you are going to create the memorial, what it should be, and how long you're gonna take to do so, and how much money you're gonna spend on that. Stop giving money to One Pulse, please. Thank you.
Up next is Sandra Wade, followed by Barbara Fraser and Jean Carlos Martinez Bena. Ms. Wade, if you can please unmute your device.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi. First of all, good afternoon, everyone. I would like to take this moment to you. Thank you for allowing me to speak on the subject of acquiring the Pulse nightclub. I live in Sarasota, Florida. My son Edward Sotomayor Jr., aka Top Hat Eddie, is now one of the forty-nine angels that were shot and killed at Pulse. I am in full agreement with the city of Orlando acquiring the Pulse site and to finally get our memorial built. It has been a long seven years. I have faith in the city of Orlando that they will fulfill their promise to build the memorial so that my son Eddie, along with the rest of the angels and myself and the families, may be at peace. I also have faith in the city to have full transparency and to include the forty-nine families so that the other angels and Eddie can keep on dancing in a respective way. Eddie always went to Pulse to dance and have fun with his friends, and we must keep that memory alive. I feel the only way to do that at this time is to let the city of Orlando acquire the Pulse site and build our memorial. I feel that it's the only way and the right way to keep our angels and the city of Orlando dancing and to have peace. Thank you.
Barbara Fraser. Jean Carlos Martinez Bena. Yoli Centron. Yoli Centron, if you're on Zoom, if you can please use the raised hand feature to identify you. Okay, next is Luana Gelsner, followed by Xavier Strick and Jason Lambert.
Luana Gelsner, eight one five Gil Street, Orlando. My late father used to say this, what's done in the dark will come to the light. What has been done in the dark is here before you. The light is shining on the city of Orlando. Seven years of a cover-up. Seven years of corruption. The One Pulse Foundation, a scam. Maybe it started out to be the right thing, but it ended up being the wrong thing. What it did was took advantage of those who have lost their lives, those who have suffered, and made money, exploitation. So why are we here today? The statute of limitation hasn't really ran out? Are we concerned that finally you're beginning to hear the voices of the voiceless? The ones who literally lost their lives, their families speaking up? This is hard for me because I have been waiting and watching and working with people behind the scenes for years. And now you want to give the people who had an unlicensed nightclub two million dollars of our tax dollars? Haven't they milked us enough? Haven't they gained enough? And you are in a predicament, but city of Orlando, well, you're not a part of the cover-up. What about the backup server? What happened with all the information? What about knowing that there was non, unpermitted, um, things going on, co-violations? Why would, a friend of mine, once I provided him some information, we had the record of a twenty-five thousand dollar bill for public request. But since then, if you're all about transparency, Mayor Dyer and the council, the world needs to know that you're prepared to charge the Pulse families six hundred thousand dollars to get public information. Where's the transparency there? So I say this is, what's done in the dark will come to the light. We're here. You've covered up and protected your friends, conflict of interest, all kinds of things. Where do we go from here? We don't trust you. Lack of transparency, cover-up. Thank you.
Up next is Xavier Strick, followed by Jason Lambert and Blue Star. Xavier? Jason Lambert? Blue Star, if you're on Zoom, if you can unmute your device. And Telly Bennett, if you're on Zoom, if you can please use your raised hand. Marlene Bill Saint. Marlene Bill Saint, if you can please step up to the podium.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Marlene Bill Saint. My daughter, Yona Lubrin, was killed on September twenty-eighth of this year. And yet I have not have any answers. They claim it's suicide, but my daughter was not suicidal. My daughter would not take her life. My daughter was my caretaker. She was my second part of life. I cannot do nothing for myself. She feed me, dress me, clothed me, do everything for me, and yet she was taken away from me. And I have not hear anyone come and says to me, hey, this is what we are doing. We called the lead investigator. They were very disrespectful to us, would not give us any answer, hang up the phone in our face. Um, we contacted, um, Regina Hall. She was very disrespectful. Um, on Friday, was at a meeting, I approached her to ask her some questions. And she was very rudely and tell me that I owe her an apology on behalf of my family. And, um, it's very hurtful that I'm going through this. And for someone that has been going through the similar situation, she knows how it hurts. And to demand that I give her an apology on behalf of my family because her and my daughter was going tongue-to-tongue. Um, I would like the city of Orlando to please look into this case because this is not another case that's going to be swept under the rug. Several young black women and men that died in Orlando, they claim it's suicide. Hanging on trees with hands tied behind their back. How can someone commit suicide by tying their own hands behind their back and hanging themselves on a tree? Please, city of Orlando, please mayor, please leaders, help me find out what's going, what happened to my daughter. Thank you.
April Jacobs.
Compassion. Compassion to see and to feel the position of another, offering support, empathy, and understanding. Yona Lubrin. Why is the unusual circumstances in which Ms. Lubrin left this earth not a concern? The lack of compassion and empathy. There's a mother, a sister, aunts, uncles, nieces, and nephews who will have to continue to exist without Yona. And the family and friends of Yo-Yo, as we called her, we loved her and we desire answers. See, Yona, Yo-Yo wasn't just another body to those who knew and loved her, and she shouldn't be just another body or case left unsolved. Because nothing matters to anyone until it happens to you. And anyone who has personally lost a child to violence or to any kind of death, they have my deepest sympathy. Especially those to this day who have not received justice or answers. Crimes and injustices left unanswered, only to be swept under the rug, will continue to be repeated and swept under the rugs of injustice until the rugs are removed and replaced by the hardwood floors of justice. Marlene Lubrin, mother. Naomi Lubrin, sister. I don't know the names of the whole family, but we are, we want some answers. We want some answers because like this mother said, how do you, what happened? I want to know. What happened first? Did she hang herself first and didn't vandalize her car? What did she do? Can we get some answers? Can we get some respect? Can we get some honor? Can we get people that's gonna act like that was their niece, their daughter, their mother, their sister? Compassion to see and to feel the position of another, offering support, empathy, and understanding. Where is it at?
We're gonna return to Shayla De Jesus on Zoom. If you can please unmute your, unmute your device.
I'm gonna get something on Zoom.
Ms. De Jesus, if you can please unmute your device. Okay, we're gonna move on to Stefan Tomlinson. Please unmute your device. Mayor, that's all the speakers we have.
What's that?
That's all the speakers we have. We have two with tech issues, but they're not coming through.
Okay, that is all the speakers that we have. Madam on B seven, madam clerk, did we have any other speakers on any other items on the consent agenda or the, uh, EDB, CRA?
I do not.
Okay, then as to the gender review meeting, we will stand adjourned. We will reconvene the city council meeting. And we were, let's see, we've gotten through awards, presentations. So we are in the mayor's update and actually there's a state of the items that were given you. Last one is, uh, we'll, we have our next meeting for Mr. Gray's birthday will happen, so if you could. To you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, Commissioner Gray. Happy birthday to you. Okay, and I don't have any other things on the mayor's update, so we are gonna move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda or a number of items that are acted upon through the, um, a single vote of council. We give each of the council members an opportunity to comment on the consent agenda and items of importance from their districts. We rotate the order that we do that. Commissioner Ortiz is first up today, and then I also want to remind you that, um, MPB item number eight, um, was moved to new business, so that is not part of the consent agenda. All right, Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Mayor, I was gonna ask you to see, because one of the, uh, the people that stood up to, to speak, they were talking about this city not doing certain. people that stood up to speak, they were talking about the city not doing certain things, and maybe, maybe you can give us some kind of a rerun over the things that the city, because it did, because the city raised over thirty million dollars back seven years ago to to divide among the victims and victims' families and a bunch of things. So you guys are gonna, okay, all right, never mind. You guys are gonna talk about that. That's good.
Well, I wasn't, but I will say that in the wake of Pulse, uh, that very day, or maybe the very next day, there was an outpouring of support from our community, people that wanted to contribute to to the victims' families, to the survivors in a monetary fashion. So we created the One Orlando Foundation that was chaired by Alex Martins and did in fact receive Heather thirty, how much?
Thirty-four million.
Thirty, thirty-four million dollars in contributions and Ken Feinstein had, who had helped in the wake of nine eleven and then the Boston Marathon assisted us in developing some methodology and how that would be distributed. We took a lot of input from both victims and survivors and family members and developed a methodology under which that thirty-four million dollars was distributed. We actually think distributed about thirty million dollars of it. And then after we had thought we were gonna stop taking contributions, an additional three to four million dollars came in, so we distributed that using the same methodology. Secondly, as you mentioned, or as we mentioned before, we sought to purchase the site so we could move it forward and make sure that there was a memorial that was created. The owner did not, decided not to sell, and a foundation was created for the purpose of instructing and designing and constructing and raising the money to construct a memorial, which also ended up with at least their desire to do a museum. I wasn't necessarily supportive of that aspect. I'm supportive very much of doing the memorial and having a focus on that. In addition, we opened the Orlando United Assistance Center, which was open for a number of years and then transitioned over to the center to continue to assist those involved in Pulse with healthcare and mental health needs as well. So those are the things that the city has done.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so I'm gonna speak pretty quick about a fast flying to Washington that I had last week from Monday to Wednesday to address or to talk to Congress about some of the initiative we have that pertain to our cities. And we went as a group, as a delegation from the Florida League of Cities. So I went representing the city of Orlando and there was, I just gonna speak briefly about each one of the items. Federal preemption of local government broadband deployment. I know that many of you have seen how companies, telephone companies come in and they start digging in front of your house. Some of them are doing it right. They're going through the through the easement, although we have no power to control that anymore because the state came in and took those powers away from us. Many people call us thinking that we have something to do with that. Well, the state took, they took those powers away from us. But what is worse now is they're going to a national level, at the national level, the same companies are going to a national level to try to get Congress to pass legislation so they can preempt the state. So it's gonna be even more difficult for you to complain about this because you're gonna have to call your congressperson. So those are one of the things that we fight about all the time at the local level, home rule, trying to get those powers to stay at our level so we can work with you. And when you have a complaint, we can help you. But when this kind of things happen, it's really hard for us. So that's one of the things we went to fight for. The other one is, um, there's a new PFAS, maybe either most of you or some of you may not understand, that's a new chemical that's being found in water and agriculture and some of equipment for firefighters, for law enforcement. And what we're asking Congress is for them to go ahead and regulate this. Right now, there's regulation allows for seventy-something parts to a trillion. Uh, we're trying to see if that can be minimized because of the increasing cancer, and this has to do with that. So that's another one of the items. National flood insurance program. There's a lot of pockets that have not been taken care of. The maps for this national flood insurance have not been updated in years. Um, and in addition, some of the houses that have been built in some of these flooding areas, in some cases, people come in, they know it's a flooding area, so they build homes a little higher to try to avoid having to, to pay for higher premiums or to also, or get flooded. Well, that's not being considered when they pay for the premiums and they just have like one top of umbrella. We're trying to change that to see if Congress comes back and and take this cases on a case by case instances. And so this is some of the things. Another ones, one of the other ones that we also went advocating for is beach renourishment that has to do with easements at the beach. I don't think we have any beach, you know, in the city of Orlando. So on that one, we're gonna skip. Simplifying local government grants, trying to get for the federal government to simplify this grant so people can apply. There's some of these grants are municipalities that don't have the, the people to apply for this grant and other cases, they don't have the manpower in terms of amount. Some of these grants pertain to certain levels of, let's say, police officers or firefighters or whatnot, and because of that, they don't qualify. So we're trying to change that. It should be in an equitable way where everybody has a chance to apply for this grant, and there should be a process that can be simplified in order for this small municipalities to be able to apply. As I said before, many of them are now getting grants that are very much needed because they don't have the, the people to fill out this, this grant. And the federal government makes it really difficult to fill these forms. CDBG monies, Community Development Blog Grant, which we have seen great things being, uh, being done in our community with this grants that we get from the federal government. We match them with, with, um, with private and public monies, and that's how we are able to cure many of the ailments that we have in our communities in terms of our development and, and for housing for our communities also, especially affordable housing. And for the last one that we work with is a tax exemption for municipal bonds. Municipal bonds is a way for us to be able to build a lot of the projects locally, and we don't need the federal government. Right now, they're not taxing, but we don't need the federal government to start taxing us on federal bonds. So that's that part. That was our little showdown for, for our trip to to Washington. So let me talk a little bit about B seven. Mayor, when, when I was informed of the of the intent to, to purchase the Pulse property, the first thing that came to my mind is we're reopening this wound, but I guess is a wound that has not healed at the end of the day. And we do have to heal. It's been seven years. I think it's been a long time. And so I hit the field and I went out to places, to different places. I went to the center, I went to talk to other friends, whatnot, and and the complaints were pretty much the same. The same thing that we have heard today. Uh, they do want something uplifting, something noble to be done, which I agree, very much agree with this property. But they want to know what's going on. They want to know, they want clarity, they want transparency in terms of what's been happening with the monies. They also don't want one more cent to go to this family that owns the place. But I, but we have a predicament, a huge predicament. How can we attain the place without buying it? Because it's their property. Somebody mentioned that before. So, so I see where the mayor is trying to, and the council here is trying to move forward to put this pain behind us and try to attain this property. What I was, what I would suggest, I know that tax dollars are being involved on this. Back then, as the mayor mentioned, we, we raised thirty-four million dollars. I'm pretty sure we can raise two million dollars. So maybe the city can buy this and then we can raise the money to pay back the taxpayers. It would be a way of solving this issue and everybody, everybody gets what they want and people feel comfortable with the fact that the city is getting the taxpayers' dollars back. I cannot attest that this is gonna happen. This is a decision from the council, the mayor and the council, but I think this is a way for us to put an end to this. And finally, get a hold of that property and do what is best for the community with the feedback of the community. Mayor, I know that this is, this is a tough decision, and I know you've been struggling with this, and every member of this commission has been struggling with this. So with that, uh, when the time comes, when we get to see that particular item, I would like to propose, if it's feasible, that we do move forward with a clause that we are gonna attempt to get that money back to replace the taxpayers' dollars that are going to be used. Thank you, Sean.
Okay, Commissioner, first, just Stuart.
Thank you, Mayor, and let me kind of continue the same thought before I get to some of the announcements. The, the, I believe that, that the proper thing to do is get control of the property. I think you're right on task. I also believe that, that we should move as quickly as possible, but together a plan. Um, I know that's probably your goal as well. And, uh, I don't know how long it's gonna take to get something together. I would recommend uh, some type of timeframe, three months, six months, some kind of timeframe. I have a concern that, that the city controls this property and the city builds something, the city also will have to maintain it for in perpetuity. And I would like to see that go into some, to a, a, a private support for that. I don't know it's gonna happen. I think that would be our goal to accomplish that. Uh, I think there are good people out there that want to be part of this. I think I'd love to, I'm gonna support this move forward, and I know, Mayor, I know your heart. And I know we're trying to get to a place where the community owns this and not the city of Orlando. And so, um, and I appreciate that. Let me cover a couple of things, um, just some quick announcements and thank yous. Uh, I want to say thank you to FBR for a great golf tournament where you raised a little bit of money. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Had an opportunity to celebrate the Iwo Jima Brewing, uh, I've been a part Brewing Company's fifth anniversary. Uh, I cannot believe it's been five years, but they did a great event over there. I was happy to be part of that. Uh, and the mayor had a chance to tap a new keg, and we renamed it Robert Red Ale, just wanted to let you know. And we had another anniversary, the College Park Cafe, and then of course, a, a big anniversary coming up is the seventieth anniversary of Audubon Park. Um, those are all things that are, that are, uh, on our, on our doorstep. Uh, tomorrow, the mayor and I will have an opportunity to, uh, put, to, uh, mark unveil some historical markers in College Park. Those, uh, will be, um, celebrating our one year shy of the hundredth anniversary of, of College Park. And I appreciate you, Mayor, you being involved in that. On a special announcement, let me just share, because many of you guys know I'm a Rotarian, and I'm just, and many things the Rotary Club does, I'm very proud of. The single largest fundraising effort in the history of the world was done by Rotarians throughout the world in an effort to end polio. Tomorrow is Polio Plus Day, which is our opportunity to celebrate. We went from three hundred and fifty thousand cases thirty years ago to last year, we had two. So the idea that we can stamp out polio. Now, the byproduct of it is, is, this is inoculations being done by Rotarians, kind of like me, throughout the entire country, and then there were one point four million people. But when COVID hit and we had to figure a way to get vaccines out, they use the same method, and we had an opportunity to really impact the world for COVID vaccines. So this methodology can work. Um, so much so that now the next step, step is to try to address malaria. These are the kind of things that we get involved in. Yeah, we've raised roughly three and a half billion dollars as a private funding to make this happen. And I say we, I didn't give the first billion, I just gave a little bit of it. But, uh, it's been a really neat project, and tomorrow we celebrate that. Each year we do that, on the twenty-fourth. Uh, upcoming, um, other events, the, uh, on twenty-fourth tomorrow evening is the, uh, Edgewater Drive Complete Streets. A public meeting is gonna be over at Churchill the Drive, so get a chance to please attend if you'd like to give us your input. East End Markets having their tenth anniversary, I can't believe that, that's coming up this weekend. Rosemont Community Center, College Park Community Center are both doing events. And of course, the College Park Main Street Jazz Fest is coming up between now and our next meeting. Other things on the agenda, I want to say congratulations to our Main Street programs. Thank you very much for the work that y'all have done and continue to do, and I get to celebrate anniversaries a few weeks ago, or I guess last week. Um, and also, as a reminder to those that are listening, the city works with our social service agencies to support city of Orlando residents. And so we will approve today just over three million dollars of money going to help those people in the dark community. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Shan.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Dyer, and, um, I know this has been a long day and an ever hard day. And, uh, Roy, I just have one quick question. If I'm putting you on the spot and you need a minute to to think about it, I, I will, I will do that and just go through my comments, but, um, by purchasing this property, does that absolve the ownership, the poem is of any responsibility for any lawsuits or any, any culpability or anything like that?
Uh, no, not at all.
Okay. And, um, and I just have a few things to say because my name was, of course, mentioned in a very unfavorable fashion, and I would like to, I'd like to address that. And that's not appropriate to snicker. I, I suffered deeply, deeply after this massacre, deeply. I didn't sleep for six months, okay? And I, and, and I needed, I needed time to heal myself, so. I was also concerned about permitted, unpermitted renovations that I had heard about from some of the first responders. And I did have a discussion with Zachary Blair about that. Um, I was hurting. I was in a bad place. I was also very angry. But the responsibility for everything that happened at Pulse nightclub that night was the responsible of a shooter that came in and massacred forty-nine people. Several of whom I knew personally. It's not the city. Our police department went in in minutes to rescue as many people as they possibly could. There is no cover up here. If there were unpermitted renovations, the city didn't know about it. That's what's unpermitted means. It's not the responsibility of the city. What Mayor Dyer and myself did from the, and this council, many of you who were there with me that morning. What we did from the first moments was work to establish a fund to help the victims and their families. We wanted to distribute every cent of that money to these families. We worked with the hospitals to forgive the bills. Many of which were hundreds of thousands of dollars for these victims, and Orlando Health and Advent Health came forward and did that. And that was an amazing thing for them to do, and I don't think that happened anywhere else in the country where there's been a mass shooting. And, 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 yes. I trust that anger is a part of grief. I understand it because I experienced a lot of it myself. I experienced anger, I experienced denial, I experienced all of that in those days beyond that time and since. And I've heard from many people in the last few days who have been re-traumatized as a result of this even being discussed. But this anger is misdirected. Threats against the city council or the community or anybody else is misdirected anger. We did everything we could to try to help people. And I know I did, and I trusted some people clearly that I shouldn't have because they have really misused my trust to come to my home and to come here and make these kind of these kind of accusations against me when I nearly fell in that black hole myself. Um, people tried to give me money. And I felt intense support, and I felt so guilty. And I gave every cent back that anyone offered me. I donated to every organization that was helping people. If anyone has any concerns over this process, I will make myself available to answer all your concerns in a public forum at the appropriate time. Once I have, I've been making, keep making copious notes during this proceeding, and I will make myself available to do that for you. I don't know if it's gonna help. I don't know if you're ever gonna be able to forgive. I don't know if you're ever gonna be able to move on. But I will do what I can so that you feel comfortable with what's happening because I want you to, I want you to feel trust. And I want you to feel the way that I felt as a member of the LGBTQ community when I saw people come together to help us in a way that I'd never seen before. So it is possible to have a horrible thing happen to you and to respond with beauty. It is possible. It is possible to move forward. It is possible to do good. I never ever thought I would ever experience anything like that, and I will never ever be able to get out of my head the screams of those mothers as they found out their children died when I was on the street with them. So don't tell me that I don't care. That I don't feel this. Now, in year two, I saw what was happening. I saw that had become a for-profit thing, and I didn't like what I saw, and I had to walk away from my own sanity. I hoped I hoped that the one Pulse Foundation would do the right thing. I hoped that they would. But I had to walk away from my own sanity because what was happening was wrong and I knew it. But I can tell you right now, the only way that we're going to be able to move forward as a community is to get possession of the property so that we can build a proper memorial, which I have heard from day one from these families who lost their kids, who were trying, who were together and dancing. People who lost their mothers, they lost their family members, they lost their brothers, they lost their sisters, they lost their coaches. They lost people that mattered to them. And all they want is to have them remembered in a respectful, decent and dignified way. And that's all I want to see. And I know that's all Mayor Dyer wants to see, and that's all this council wants to see. This is not a cover up. This is not about ego. This is about honoring the loved ones that deserve to be honored. And this has been about ego for way too long. This needs to be about honor and decency and compassion. And that's what I've lived my life to. If you don't trust me, I feel sorry for you because my heart is pure in this. Now I've had to put my own feelings aside for the higher good. I don't like paying anybody after they've already been gotten insurance claim either. I know. But I also see the higher good and I appreciate my colleagues for bringing that up too. We need to do a respectful, decent memorial. And you know what? By being transparent, by having this process, we probably will be able to return to the point where people will be willing to donate and help us with this process. We came together in unity seven and a half years ago in a way that I have never seen. But there was also an ugly side to it. I had to have 24/7 police protection. And Mayor Dyer and I were both threatened. It was a horrible time. It was a beautiful and horrible time. But you know what? We did what was right for this community. Don't you want that again? Don't you want to feel that way again, like we did when we were at Lake Eola and we all came together? Don't you want that? I do. I do. So I'm asking you, I'm begging you, please, trust us. And let us do this. And you will be included, not you, I know you've been excluded. I was excluded. I know how that feels. I want this to go forward today because I feel it's the right thing to do because I have been with the families. I, I met 38 of the 49 families. And I think this is the right and appropriate thing to do. I appreciate this council support. I appreciate you, Mayor Dyer, because this has been horrible. This day's been difficult, but we will do the right thing by everyone. And not everybody's going to agree and not everybody, you know, we're never going to get his consent. Just every, two people can look at something and then see two completely different things. But I can tell you the process will be done with love, commitment and decency, much like all those city employees. Many of you don't know that many of the city employees, and I want to thank you here today. You left your desks for months to help with immigration, to help with fundraising, to help people get resources, to help families get the death benefit to bury their kids. You did that, city employees, and I appreciate you and I love you for that. And when they call you a city family, you really did come together to help people. And I really appreciate that and you did not deserve any level of anger that's being directed today. I appreciate you. And we need to do the right thing by these families today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your leadership, this council. Um, I couldn't have, I can't put it any more eloquently than Commissioner Shan has phrased it. Only thing I can say is today, uh, I think we're all in agreement that we need to make sure that we secure and protect this sacred ground in perpetuity. As Mayor Dyer stated, um, and through his leadership and through the community's input, uh, we will move forward on what will happen there at that site. But my vote today isn't a yes for our owner. Or it is a vote to secure that property and make sure that it isn't sold to some developer that can do whatever they would choose to do on that property. Uh, my vote is for the families in those 49 angels. I too today, and I wasn't going to say anything, but I, I, I must also speak on my integrity and my character, Mayor, if you allow me. Because I was accused today of being someone that was not thoughtful, callous to death, to the heartache of a mother, sister or auntie. Um, I did attempt to meet at the police station with this grieving family. Uh, his daughter and a pastor from Black Lives Matter at OPD. There's film right there to prove it. Uh, unfortunately, a community activist, Ms. Gelsner, rolled up and snatched them from the door and put them in their car. I told them that I could meet them at their, at my office. And my staff and I waited three hours for them to come and they never showed up. I was laying in my bed about 10:30 at night because I'm still a grieving parent. It doesn't go away. Even if we build this memorial each and every day, you will still grieve the loss of your loved one. Whether they died of a illness or whether they died of a violent crime. Your heart still has a hole in your soul. So I understood. But when I got that call that night, I reached out and called my uncle. Uh, and asked, should I return this call at 10 o'clock at night? He said, well, wait till business hours. But as that person that is traumatized and still going through those, that grief, said, no, I need to call this daughter back. Because I don't know how she got my number, but I do have caller ID. And I saw the name, Naomi. And I called back and immediately I was accused of working with the police. I was accused of not caring. I was accused of not being a commissioner that knew what she was doing by the Black Lives Matter pastor and by the family member. I was told that they had hired an attorney to sue OPD and the city of Orlando. And I stated at that time, well, since you have informed me legally that you have obtained an attorney, I can no longer speak with you because I am a city official. And I, at this time, you would have to refer all of your questions to our legal department and law enforcement. But prior to that, I stated that I had spoken with our chief and I had, and he had reopened the investigation. But the cause of death is not decided by law enforcement. It is decided by the coroner's office, which is the medical examiner by Orange County. And that's where they would need to take up their concerns about the manner of death in the ruling. Was with Orange County and the medical examiner and the county commissioner of that dis- of that area, which is District Six, where it was held. And that I sympathize and I grieve. And then I saw the mother at a community event, as she stated. And she asked me, was I Regina Hall? I said, no, I'm Regina Hill. And she told me who she was and immediately I attempted to give her a hug. And that was denied. And she stated, who was her daughter? I said, I'm familiar and I've spoken with your daughter and how I was abused by your daughter. And she said, well, that doesn't matter. I'm here to talk about my daughter. I said, no, it does matter. I shouldn't be abused by trying to help, whether I'm the commissioner or not. And she asked me, Mayor, was in council and public? Well, if you're looking for apology, I'm not giving it to you. And I said, ma'am, you have a good night. And I walked away. I don't think that was rude. I think that I did my best to try to accommodate. But I am also one traumatized. She said, well, no, she said, have you ever lost a daughter? And I said, yes, unfortunately I have. She said, well, I'm not here to talk about your daughter. I'm here to talk about mine. And I said, well, ma'am, you have a good night. And I proceeded to go to my car hurt also, that my daughter didn't matter. And we had something in common. And that was the end of that until this evening, to this afternoon. But I want to say that we all matter. And because we're commissioners or, or, or law enforcement, doesn't mean that we don't hurt anymore. Nor does it mean that I'm going to allow people to abuse me and inflict more trauma on me. So I'm here and I always try to be here. Someone know me. But I go to sleep at night also missing my daughter. I, every minute raising her grandchild. So for Ms. Gelsner and her crew and the, and the inflict those that are traumatized with more trauma to hate. God bless them and I pray for them every day. Uh, on another note, I just had to get my truth out. I am in support, as I stated, of B7. And uh, it is a step forward in the right direction. And I look forward to uh, more conversations and transparency in the healing process for people to heal. Um, C, uh, at CRA, I'm in support of uh, three and four. I think this is a great incentive uh, for uh, restaurants uh, here in the downtown corner, up to $400,000 to build them out. Uh, and in the Paramore area. This is uh, also included in us, also you got Eola Heights. You know, not just to build restaurants, but when we start looking at the economic development component of it all, the job creation. Um, uh, downtown really becoming that community of not just work, live and play, but uh, a work, live and thrive. And this is the type of uh, vision that uh, the downtowners asked for. And I think David, almost three years where we had Charettes and different things of that nature with the DTO vision, which it goes hand in hand along with this uh, uh, CRA six, which is uh, the high wage, high value component of bringing more uh, high wage jobs downtown. Uh, but I'm more excited that it's going to be expanded to the Paramore area when we start talking about small businesses and restaurants that's there being able to be sustainable because we have uh, employees in that corner there and here downtown also. So that's a, a lot of great things that's happening. Um, because of the time constraint and what we've gone through today, which was very important city business to hear the voices of those families and loved ones and the community. Uh, I do want to end with this note. Uh, we had a youth uh, football season, which was a great football season. Uh, yesterday we played the Super Bowl uh, there at Camping World Stadium. Uh, but uh, Commissioner uh, Burns, now that we share a district and most of my kids went to your district, uh, there, uh, Grand Avenue, we were able to win a Super Bowl ring. So there you go, uh, for my kids. Uh, you're welcome. Yeah, since you've been over there in Paramore Kids, I was, yeah. So we had another one that joined, uh, these kids joined the Porter, or as you say, the portal, right? Uh, when you have a coach that transfer to another division and uh, area, which I had a great, two great coaches over in the Mercy Drive Corner. And Mayor Dyer and council uh, gave us some new funding to transport kids that wanted to play football. Because at that time, we didn't have a football team last year over in Mercy Drive. So we transferred them uh, back over to uh, Rosemont. And uh, this year we had one where I got another ring this year at Mercy Drive. Uh, beat our team, the Saints. But uh, the uh, junior league, which is led by my grandson Hector Poppy Rodriguez as the quarterback, went to the Super Bowl yesterday and uh, brought back a Super Bowl ring with all those kids from Mercy Drive that's transported every day to practice and Poppy jumping in the portal with the rest of them. So Commissioner Stewart, you finally got a Super Bowl ring. From the kids from District Five jumping in the porter. Can you hand that to him, Mayor?
Hey, hey, just remind you this, Rosemont.
Yeah, Rosemont.
It's very nice.
Yeah, so, so that, I would like to end with that. You know, it works when you're working and all, all coming together and uh, looking towards the future.
Great to know. We have talented youth.
There you go. It's all sections of the city. He did, he did, he did. And, 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 and his uncle Tony's already trying him, the, the, the crossover and get him a girlfriend over on East Side, he told him.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burns.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, just a few updates. On uh, Monday, October the 16th, I had the pleasure of hosting my bi-annual State of District Six Address and Award Ceremony. Uh, I was honored to share with the residents of District Six, some of the progress that has taken place since I've taken office uh, and how we've been able to move District Six forward. Uh, but also I'd like to just thank my city staff for making that happen. Uh, but also from uh, several departments of the city. We had some uh, departments there ready to answer any questions that the residents have. So thank you to Public Works, Transportation and Planning Division, Housing and Community Development. Also, I'd like to thank uh, the Chief Planning Manager, Paul Lewis and his team for tabling and sharing uh, information about the uh, new AARP accessory dwelling unit educational project. Uh, but also during that evening, we recognized and gave some, uh, recognized some community partners. Uh, we recognized John Matt Reynolds and Universal Orlando for, as the uh, corporate sponsor of the year. Uh, Gene Martin and Route Seven for receiving uh, the community partner of the year. Uh, my church, Mount Pleasant Missionary Baptist Church and Pastor Morrison for receiving the faith partner of the year. And then we highlighted our uh, Neighborhood Association of the Year. And that was won by Carver Shores Neighborhood, uh, which is led by Ms. Shirley Heath. So we had a good evening. And again, thank you to all the city departments for your participation. Have a few upcoming uh, activities. Uh, actually today at 6:30 at the Dr. James R. Smith Center, uh, we'll be hosting a community meeting with HTG Development Group. They're going to be talking about the uh, new Affordable Senior Housing Project that's going to happen on the corner of uh, Columbia Street and Bruton Boulevard behind the Masonic Lodge. Uh, this is one uh, development that uh, the community is excited about ensuring that our seniors have access to affordable housing. So uh, encourage everyone to come out at 6:30 to ask your questions, uh, see renderings and get more information about that project. Also, um, want to mention that on tomorrow, the 24th, at Grand Avenue Neighborhood Center, we will be hosting uh, chief, uh, OPD Chief Eric Smith for his community meeting. Uh, that will start at uh, 6 o'clock from 6 to 7. So encourage everyone to come out. Also on Wednesday, October the 25th, I will be hosting my satellite hours, uh, satellite office hours at the L. Claudia Allen Senior Center. Again, this is a time for the residents to come meet with me and my staff so they don't have to necessarily come to City Hall and deal with the parking uh, issues that they may encounter. So encourage everyone, if you want to meet with me and my staff, uh, to, uh, the 25th from 9 to 3. Uh, and then also on November the 1st, we have another community meeting announcing, um, and uh, to announce and receive input on the affordable housing development that will be happening in the former Piedmont Box yard. So that will happen at 6:30 at the Grand Avenue uh, Community Center. So I encourage everyone who's interested to learn more about the affordable housing that's coming up in District Six to please plan on attending. Also, Mayor, um, on the agenda, on the agenda today, um, I will be abstaining from items A5 and A7. And as you all are aware, for the past 20 years, I have served as the president and chief executive officer of the Healthcare Center for the Homeless. Item A5 and seven on today's consent agenda contains a funding agreement, well, contains two funding agreements with the Healthcare Center for the Homeless. For several years, the city has provided this funding to uh, the Healthcare Center for the uh the Healthcare Center for the Homeless, and we will again be receiving this grant funding through this agreement. I like to note that none of my compensation will come from the funds received pursuant to this funding agreement and that I have not participated in the manner in any way. Additionally, I will file the necessary uh Form eight B um memorandum of voting conflict with the city clerk. And again, we'll be abstaining from from that vote. Also, the, I think the the total of those two grants comes out to about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is about one point three percent of our twenty-three, twenty-four annual budget of about eighteen million dollars. So again, I will be abstaining from uh from that that item. Also, on B seven, um, I just want to uh express that I support the purchase of the Pulse nightclub. Uh, because I agree that we do need to uh take possession and take control of this property. So uh, we as the city, the city council and the community can decide what's the best way to move forward. Uh, it has been seven years and I appreciate the leadership of this council and you, Mayor. I was not on the council at that time, but um was impacted by by that tragedy. So I'm looking forward to working with the commission uh as well as the uh the community to see how best we move forward to make sure that we honor those forty-nine angels uh that lost their lives on that that day. Also, I like to uh recognize item D one. And this is the accepting of the U.S. Department of Justice Community Violence Intervention Grant. Uh, just want to say thank you to Congressman uh Maxwell Alejandro Fos. I know we have some representatives from his office, so we'd just like to say thank you to the congressman for his hard work in this area and bringing home the bacon. So we can, we can actually do some work and it could really uh boost and support some of the investments that some of the investments that have already been made uh by this council. So again, thank you for for that. Uh, and it will be, the the CBI program will be expanded to Rosemont. Thank you, Commissioner Hill. And Mayor Dye, that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gray.
Thanks, Mayor. Look, I know we've been here for two and a half hours and I'll be very brief. Um, and then I'll, I'll make the motion and we can move on with other business. First, I want to talk quickly about Brightline. Uh, I played hooky last Friday and I said, look, we've talked about Brightline, I'm gonna take the train. So I went out to the airport, Terminal C, jumped on the train uh in the morning and rode down to West Palm Beach. Certainly you can go all the way to Miami, but it was a two-hour trip. Uh, it was as easy as it can be, electronic tickets. You drop your briefcase or your purse or whatever it is, go through security. So there's an element of security. And rode the train for two hours and I felt comfortable and safe the entire time with beverage and food service if you want it. Uh, got in West Palm Beach and when you get off, those who are worried about transportation, don't worry. Yeah, I felt like I was getting off a cruise ship. There are people all over waiting to see you. But they, in West Palm, at least, you're five minutes from downtown. Took a little uh free uh golf cart ride downtown, had lunch, two hours later, came back, jumped on the train and was home. So that's along my story, but I would just encourage you to to, one of these days, go on Brightline because you're cheating yourself if you don't, because it is here to stay and it's going to be a good mode of transportation. So uh, dude, I want to give them a plug. Um, also on the agenda, let's go to the agenda, two items. Wanted to also congratulate all of our funding partners. They do the yeoman's work for the city and so thanks to all of you. If any of you stayed, thank you. Uh, but for those that have left, just wanted to say thank you. All right, I'm gonna close. I want to talk a little bit about the um, what we've been talking about for two and a half hours, which is the Pulte site. Couple of things I want to say, uh, and those on staff have heard this. Uh, one is the value of the property. Um, and look, these folks here have a lot of talents I don't have, but I've been in commercial real estate my entire business career. For us to to suggest that that property's worth a million nine is misleading. Uh, seven years ago, when we looked at this site, our own appraiser said the property was worth seven hundred thousand. So where's the balance? People are trying to give value to the improvements. And I would suggest to you that the improvements, those that are still there, the owners have already been paid for their improvements through insurance. And if they haven't, it's their own fault they didn't have insurance. But we are buying land. Don't make any mistake about it. And I would also suggest the value of that land since the event is probably less more because of the tragic event and and the stigma associated with that. I can't imagine a business coming in and say, I'll pay two million and open up a fast food joint or whatever. It's only a third of an acre, so there's limited things you can do. So let's not be confused. We're, we're paying at least two to three times the value of that property. And so uh with that, but let's, here's another fact. The reality is it's sacred ground. It was said before. Um, the only purpose for that site, in my view, given the historic significance to this city, is that we make a memorial. Like these folks, I don't know what that is. We let the Pulse Foundation try to figure that out and for whatever reasons they failed. So let's, let's take another stab at it. But I think we need to control that as the city first. And to me, the best way to do that and to make sure the taxpayers pay a fair price is we do eminent domain. That's what eminent domain was brought up for. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Two and a half hours, we got to hear from you. Give me five minutes and then we can, we can always talk. Thank you, sir. Um, so where was I? So we should, in my view, I would like to talk to the council about eminent domain. Why? Because it meets the criteria for eminent domain. It's for the public use and clearly if that site's not in the best interest of the public, I don't know what is. And two, the owners will be paid a fair price through the courts. And if it comes out to be two million, great, we'll pay him two million. But I would bet you a dollar, it's gonna be a lot less than two million. And that that way, we pay the fair price, we still control it, we can still do a memorial, but we don't succumb to the owners who have done absolutely nothing that they promised they would do. Uh, and then we should do eminent domain. So with that, Mayor, before I move the agenda, I was hoping we could talk about this at at Agenda Review, but I understand there is a lot of ups and downs. But if.
So Commissioner, just let me respond. So I just had a couple of things I want to respond to anyways. When we did the thirty-four million dollars, there was some discussion back then. When we got the second tranche of money, should we set that aside to begin raising money for the memorial? And we decided back then that no, we're gonna give one hundred percent of those monies raised to the victims and their families. Um, and we did that. There was no administration cost, no anything, hundred percent of that thirty-four million. When we were in contract to purchase the property originally, we did a fair amount of investigation with people that had done memorials. So we talked with extensively with Oklahoma City, with New York City. And we learned very quickly, these things are not easy to do. There's a lot of emotion that's involved in this. There's a lot of um differing opinions on how you go about doing something like this. So I gotta concede that I was actually a little bit relieved when we were not able to accomplish the original per- purchase. And that when the One Pulse Foundation was originated, it seemed that it was taking a lot off our plate. If a private entity and not for profit entity with a lot of people that we all respect became board members could accomplish this task. And they certainly ran into some um road, if not road bumps, road blocks along the way. Um, I disagree with a lot of the things that they did and how they went about doing it. We're now here seven years later. And I don't think this is a, do I want to do this? Not really. Do I think we have to do this? Absolutely. That is the position that we are in. Do I want to pay them two million dollars? No, I don't really want to pay two million dollars. I would have rather seen the property donated either to us or to One Pulse, but that's not where we are. We're, I'm looking at this from an elevation of what is best for our community? What is best for the families of the victims, the survivors and our community as a whole? How can we bring this community back together in the manner that we did seven years ago? And the only way I see to do that is while there are few people out here that don't trust city, vast majority of the people trust the city to know that we're the ones that get things done. We do it in a transparent fashion, which is what we have pledged to Commissioner Ortiz. I will attempt and hope everybody will join me to raise money to not just offset the two million dollars, but to offset whatever the cost of the memorial going forward is. I don't have a plan going forward till right this second in purchasing this property, but we will have one shortly and it will be again as open and transparent. And it will be inclusive of the families of the victims and inclusive of survivors and anybody else that wants to participate in some fashion. To you, Commissioner Gray, I just want to get this done and.
Sir, I know you do and I respect that, but we gotta make tough choices. That's, we're, by my view, number one, we talk about transparency. Representing to the public that this is worth almost two million dollars, that's not transparent. It's not. And I will argue with anybody that wants to argue about that. But that notwithstanding, all we're talking about in eminent domain is just controlling the land.
Well, the two million dollars was their asking price. And I think we just need to move forward. If you need to vote no on that.
I, I know you want to move forward. I'm trying to look at taxpayers as a fiduciary to taxpayers and say, why are we wasting a million dollars of your money? That's all I'm saying. I, I, I'm not asking more than anything in that. So I will finish, but I, I think everybody knows where I stand. If anybody wants me to amend this and move it to new business so we can talk, great. If I'm outvoted by everybody and everybody wants to pay a million bucks more, then I'll move the agenda. So somebody give me a nod if you want me to do something different, but I, I, we are a hundred percent together. The city should control the site. We should have some influence. Look at Oklahoma City. That is a, that is a founding board, a guidance board that is con- is comprised of both public and private figures. Bill Clinton is one of the Board of Governors. That's pretty public. And they've got local people there too. So we're not saying we're gonna do it all. But all I'm talking about is getting the land under our control at a fair and reasonable price. And a million bucks is a million bucks.
Commissioner Hill and Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes, Mayor, I'm in support of moving it forward. When I think about these forty-nine uh angels and all their grieving relatives that hurt every day and some of their parents being elderly and senior, some of them probably have lost parents and family members not knowing what tomorrow holds for them. Uh, and you're making a commitment to reach out to some of our great partners throughout the city to recoup the two million dollars, putting a, a price tag on their pain and suffering. At this point, I just, it, it grieves me. So I, I think we've made, you're gonna make a commitment and you're a man of your word to recoup those two million dollars through philanthropic uh efforts. Uh, I don't think we should belabor this. It's seven years too long.
Commissioner Ortiz.
If I could, I'm sorry. No, I was just, I agree, because I heard what what Commissioner Ortiz said. But if any corporation or company wants to contribute dollars, they're gonna want to put their name somewhere. That's sponsorship one oh one. And we're trying to get the corporate element, I think, out of this. But that's why I don't.
It's some good, it's some good people.
I don't know that I buy into it.
I, I know you.
If somebody's gonna want their name.
I know, I know you missed the moneybags and I was looking at the bottom line. But there's some good people out there that don't want your name or something, just want to.
Tackle this, because we people keep hearing, tell, you keep talking about money, but tell me what rich is, because I might be rich. I don't know. Tony must be.
Okay, we're off point. Let's just.
Mister Moneybags.
Okay, come on.
Anybody that shouldn't be doing labels, I think it would be you.
All right. Let's try a bake account here. Sorry, I heard you, Phyllis. I'm just stating.
Time to order, Commissioner Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just like Commissioner Jane Gray, when this information was given to me, the first thing I thought, as I said before, is we're opening up wounds that we thought was a little bit more stable now. Um, I don't agree. I, I, I've listened to the complaints, to the, to the hurting of the people in terms of where this money's going. And I totally agree with everybody. I think um, this family shouldn't get one more cent. That's a fact. The problem is they own the property. So how we go about this? And, and he has a point. We can eminent domain, but how long is that gonna take? And time is money. That's my concern about this. Um, we can raise our money. Gee, we, we raised thirty-four million dollars in no time for the victims. We can raise this money. I think, and I, I trust the mayor, the mayor in that particular aspect, and I trust the rest of the council. We can raise our money. We can return the people's monies to their pocket in, in terms of uh this money coming back to, to the city, you know, fun. And we can get rid of this and put everybody at ease. And then we will handle the property. There was not gonna be, because if we perpetuate this any longer, there's gonna be more doubts about what's going on with the rest of the money. It's gonna be more doubts about what's going on with that family. What are they doing and what else? So I know this is a tight community. We're a tight community. We have gone through greater things, you know, worse things than this. We can put our cards over the table and we can figure this out. It's not that difficult. Not everybody's gonna agree. And I have a great deal of admiration for Commissioner Gray, because he's, he's a leader when it comes to economics too. This particular, this particular case, and I discuss this and I discuss this with my conscience more than anything else, because God knows that every, everybody knows that from day one, I was opposed to this original sale. It was one of the first ones that came out and said, there's no, there's no justice in this. We're capitalizing on the death of this forty-nine and that's, that's wrong. This particular time, there's a, the, the property value, the, the market value is more in tune, not perfect. It's more in tune to what, to my asking. I'm not the perfect when it comes to assessments of properties, okay, to uh, but on the other hand, as I talked to everybody out there during the past two days, uh, last week, everybody was consistent about the same thing. They want to put this to rest. They want to move forward. This is a city of Orlando, the greatest place in the world. Let's move forward. Two million dollars, we're gonna raise them. We are gonna raise them and we're gonna bring it back. So everybody will be complete. So without being said, I move forward too.
If anybody else wants to speak, if not, I'll move the agenda. As always, appreciate you listening to me. I hear that everybody's not in favor. So with that, uh, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the appropriate exclusions from Commissioner Burns.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray.
Discussion. Uh, there is one thing.
Hold on, let's get a second.
Second.
No, Burn second.
Second by Commissioner Burns.
I just had discussion on uh CRA two, uh, with the lighting.
We're gonna take up CRA.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, all in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, and so the motion carries. Okay, we are going to recess the um city council meeting. We're gonna convene the CRA meeting. David.
Thank you, Mayor. Item one is accepting. Our CRA advisor.
Did I not say that? Motion. Did I say that or not say that?
Not yet.
Okay, uh, motion passes unanimously. I think I did too. Okay, CRA, David.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Item one, this is just minutes from our advisory meeting on August twenty-third of this year.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Sheen, all in favor indicates so by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number two.
Thank you, Mayor. Item two, this is an amendment to artistic holiday or our contract with artistic holiday designs. Um, it is to uh enhance our holiday decorations. Uh, with an immersive stroll, you may remember several years ago, we enhanced our decorations throughout Lake Yola, including the sixty-four uh foot interactive tree. We are now looking to extend that all the way down to Orange Avenue, down to City Hall Plaza, as well as into the Paramore community. Uh, the entire amount of this uh contract amendment is just under five hundred and nine thousand dollars. And this is our final year um under the current RFP with that engine.
Okay, so I, I moved the proof.
Well, could, could I? This is my Lake Yola, please.
Well, no, this is my Paramore Creative Village that's not in there, in downtown. Downtown is there.
All right.
Thank you.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner, in discussion.
So as we agreed, the downtown corner is there, but when I look through my notes here in the agenda and notes, you guys forgot to add Creative Village and um, because we're gonna do Luminary. And then they're in the uh division and church and I think Camping World Stadium and ZR Riley Park. And you don't have Creative Village or Paramore in, in the form there. So I'm trying to make sure.
Yes, we're. On record. The Paramore Community Commissioner, the exact locations of where each installment will be, we're releasing a number of different installments. And some of those are ultimately designated for the Paramore area. You're absolutely correct.
Yeah, well, me and Sherry talked about those spaces.
Those specific spaces?
Yes.
We're looking at those spaces, the Riley Park, as you mentioned, Luminary Green, and then we're looking at the public spaces along the way. All the way out to, as you mentioned, with uh the Citrus Bowl.
Okay, I was just trying to make sure that it's going in because it's not officially here.
Yes.
So in black and white, so it is established. Thank you.
Commissioner Sheen.
Uh thank you. And and David, I'd just like to say thank you because ever since we've been doing, you know, we used to have a radio station that came in and did the decor and it was very amateurish and it looked terrible. And ever since you professionalized it and supported this, um it's it's been amazing. I mean, I went to Italy and bored Thomas with my slides and said, why can't we have something special in Orlando? And you really, it really does create memories for families and everybody's downtown. It was having a great time and during COVID, it was really something special for people to be able to come and see. So I just want to thank you and your staff and the the council for doing this. And I I love the fact that it's expanding to other areas because it's really is special. And we used to always say, well, we don't deserve to have nice things. I think we do deserve to have nice things and we need to spread them throughout the city. And what better than holiday cheer? So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number three.
Thank you, Mayor. Item three is a uh new incentive program. It is an incentive program for new restaurants in the downtown area. Uh Commissioner Hill, you mentioned this in your earlier notes, but uh for for a long time, we've talked about how we continue to expand upon the culinary offerings in downtown Orlando, uh specifically of those world first full service dining. So um this program actually splits off of our former retail program and offers financial incentives of up to $400,000 uh for uh new restaurants that are full service and in our focus areas that are coming to downtown Orlando. That amount would actually um be up to $100 per square foot as a tenant improvement allowance for those businesses to build out those spaces. Uh we would look for that to be matched or be required to be matched by the landlord. So the landlord would have to match that amount. It's a dollar for dollar matching program. In addition to that, we wanted to look at other ways to activate the downtown area. Uh that would include outdoor dining. Uh that's been a of a lot of discussion in original project EGO as well as project ETO uh 2.0. So there's an enhancement that if they're having outdoor dining, we're offering an additional $25,000 of again, dollar for dollar matching funding uh to them in order to do that, as well as some rental assistance up to $50,000 if they are in one of our focus areas uh for the first year's renovation or $25,000 if they're outside of one of those focus areas. Uh if we have a restaurant that is not full service, we we want to be able to assist them as well. Um there is just a lower amount in order to do that because those build outs um are not as expensive. That amount is $100,000 in lieu of the $400,000 that was mentioned earlier. And our focus areas are uh down in the central corridor uh in the CBD around Creative Village and down into Paramore along Central Paramore Avenue as well as church. I'm happy to address any questions.
All right, do we have a motion? Oh, I thought those were in the last one.
No, sorry.
Commissioner Sheen.
Okay, uh yeah, David, um I I had a couple of questions because, you know, we used to have a re our uh our restaurant program prior many, many years ago. And uh it really didn't work very well because what would happen is someone would come in, they do all these renovations, they would get our money and then it would never open up. I don't understand how how that could even be possible, but that was the experience. They'd renovate, it would never open, renovate, never open. So what safeguards do we have in place moving forward to make sure that if we put the money forward, that we're actually going to get restaurants into downtown?
Sure. So the the incentive program is reimbursable basis, so they would not receive any money subsequent to that being um done and those improvements being made. We also have a experience requirement associated with the program that if a restaurateur is looking to come to the area, we want to see that they have five years' experience either owning or being an operator in another location so that we can help them learn the downtown area market, but they already have a good understanding and can show us that they've operated a successful restaurant in other areas so that we will hopefully not be facing those type of requirements.
Are there discussion hearing none on favor of the motion? And if so, by saying aye, uh those opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, can you repeat the votes or who moved?
Um is Hill and Sheen in what order? Commissioner Hill moved, Commissioner Sheen second.
Thank you.
Um all right, number four.
Thank you. Item four, Mayor, is our retail program. Now that we have a restaurant program, we wanted to update the retail program accordingly uh so that it no longer can address restaurants under that. Uh while we were doing that, we wanted to uh recommend that our retail program amounts be adjusted. Uh as with restaurants, it is more expensive to build out uh retail programs these days. Uh specifically personal services, we've talked a lot about it, Mayor. You've talked a lot about expanding the neighborhood aspect of downtown and personal services are a definitive component of making that a uh successful venture. So our personal services recommendation is that that amount for tenant improvements, again, at dollar for dollar matching uh after those improvements are made, is recommended at $150,000 uh for those establishments that are not personal service in nature. That would be $100,000 in nature. Um and then the same rental reimbursements uh that were recommended under the restaurant program at $50,000 for focus area businesses and $25,000 for non-focus area businesses also prevails. For this particular program, uh we also have experience requirements. Um they are a little bit less just due to the nature of of retail. They're at two years of a similar uh owner manager type of component. So I'm happy to address any questions.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Sheen, discussion. Hearing none on favor indicates so by saying aye.
I probably should have asked this uh briefing, but I I didn't know about the experience components because that wasn't told to me. Um with the landlords being the ones that have to be reimbursed and um do the build outs or what have you. So is it the landlord that needs the experience or what if the leaser has this experience or what? Where are we going with that? I apologize. I didn't ask in a briefing. Um we missed that.
The applicant is the one who needs to have the experience for this program. It's two years and that similar type of a, you don't have to necessarily be the owner. You could also have operated or been a manager, let's say for a similar type of organization. So you are showing that you have the experience to operate a successful business.
Okay, thank you, David.
Initial discussion hearing none on favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye, uh those opposed, motion carries. All right, number five was deleted from the agenda, so let's do number six.
Yes, number six, Mayor, is an amendment to our high wage, high value job creation program. Uh as we continue to try to enhance downtown Orlando, one of our focuses is uh attracting more high wage, high value jobs and companies that provide those jobs to the area. Uh for a number of years, we've had this program. What we are proposing now is that we make an amendment uh to that program. So the program currently allows for up to $4,000 of incentives per job uh for corporations who are creating high wage, high value jobs in downtown Orlando. Uh the way they're able to do that is by one, creating that job, uh by the appropriate wage value, there is incentive accordingly. In addition, there's two bonuses. There's a bonus for uh having a certain number of your employees live in downtown. There's an additional bonus available for utilizing public transportation as we try to round out the variety of options. Um what we are proposing is that we add yet another kind of o- option or a bonus for those companies who are locating headquarters locations within the Paramore area of the CRA. Uh that amount would be up to $2,000 per job. It would still be capped at the $4,000 per job that the program currently allows. And what would define a headquarters location is a corporation creating 750 high wage, high value jobs. Again, within that Paramore area and signing a 10-year lease. Um the other change to the program is a slightly reducing the square footage requirement per employee as we have seen that uh kind of iron out a little bit now post-COVID uh from the 200 square feet per employee down to 150 square feet per employee. And I'm happy to address any questions.
Motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Sheen, discussion. Hearing none on favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. David, for the business.
There is not.
No further business but come before the CRA. So without objection, we'll adjourn the CRA meeting, we'll reconvene the city council meeting. That brings us to new business, the item that be moved from the consent agenda, which is uh was part of item C two, item number eight. Understand, Commissioner Gray, you have a motion related to that.
Yeah, I'll make a a little bit of background and then a motion. Um after the MPV meeting hearing on this item, uh the applicant submitted five letters from nearby neighbors who are in support of the drive-through coffee shop as originally proposed with two drive-through windows. Therefore, I recommend approval of the East Park Village Center three, subject to the conditions of approval in the staff report and the following revisions. First, delete condition nine about the drive-throughs. Uh second, add a new condition limiting the hours of operation of the coffee shop from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And we, again, we have five letters of support from the HOA board leaders as well as the CDD. So community leaders who are fine with that and look forward to this. Also, the business owner and the property owner are okay with uh these restrictions. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Uh it was at 10:00 PM or or 8:00 PM?
I'm sorry, it's 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM and I talked to uh planning staff about that and we're okay.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz, discussion. Hearing none on favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, Madam Clerk, you're up. Hearings ordinances, second reading, number one.
Ordinance number 2023 dash 24 in ordinance of the city of Orlando granting Hamilton Alliance, Inc., a non-exclusive franchise to provide roll-off container collection and disposal of solid waste within the city of Orlando, outlining franchisees duties and providing the terms and conditions under which such such franchise shall operate, providing perseverance and effective date.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheen, second by Commissioner Burns. Is there anyone from the public, Madam Clerk? I don't have any cards.
No speakers, Mayor.
Um all in favor indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two.
Ordinance number 2023 dash 27 in ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's adopted growth management plan, future land use element to revise sub-area policies S point 35.6B, S point 35.7 and S point 35.7 point 1, providing perseverance, correction of scrivener's error and effective date.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. I don't have any cards for public participation discussion. Hearing none on favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye, uh those opposed, motion carries. Number three.
Ordinance number 2023 dash 42 in ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's adopted growth management plan to change the future land use map designation for approximately 9.6 acres of land generally located north of State Road 528 and east of Narcoose Road. Further amending the growth management plan to change the boundaries and development program of sub-area policy S point 39.1 and to amend the boundaries of sub-area policy S point 39.3, providing for amendment of the city's official growth management plan, providing perseverance, correction of scrivener's error and an effective date.
Move to adopt.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Stewart. I don't have any cards for public participation discussion. Hearing none on favor of the motion indicate, uh so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number four.
Ordinance number 2023 dash 40 in ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida, amending the boundaries of the McCoy Eagle Plan Development Zoning District. Such land being generally located east of Narcoose Road, north of State Road 528 and west of Vista Park. Amending the special land development regulations, providing conforming legal description, providing perseverance, correction of scrivener's errors and effective date.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Um I don't have any cards for participation discussion, hearing none on favor indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, number five.
Ordinance number 2023 dash 41 in ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida, amending the boundaries of the Vista Park Plan Development Zoning District. Such land being generally located south of Lee Vista Boulevard, west of State Road 417, north of State Road 528 and east of Narcoose Road, providing a conforming legal description, providing perseverance, correction of scrivener's errors and an effective date.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Stewart. I have no cards for public participation discussion. Hearing none on favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number six.
Ordinance number 2023 dash 43 in ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's adopted growth management plan by updating figure CI 14 to be entitled City of Orlando, 2023 through 2028 Capital Improvements Element Capital Improvement Fund Schedule, amending policy 2.2.30 in the Capital Improvements Element, providing perseverance, correction of scrivener's error and an effective date.
Motion by Commissioner Ortiz, second by Commissioner Stewart. I have no cards for public participation discussion. Hearing none on favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, that will, you know, bring us to ordinances on first reading. Madam Clerk, number one.
Ordinance number 2023 dash 36 in ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's growth management plan to change the future land use map designation for certain land generally located at the northwest intersection of South Ivanhoe Boulevard, east of North Magnolia Avenue, comprised of 2.4 acres of land, more or less, from downtown activity center to public recreation and institutional. Changing the property zoning designation from downtown metropolitan activity center with a traditional city overlay district to public use with a traditional city overlay district. Providing for amendment of the city's official future land use and zoning maps, providing perseverance, correction of scrivener's error, permit disclaimer and an effective date.
Go move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Don't have any cards for public participation discussion. Hearing none on favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two.
Ordinance number 2023 dash 39 in ordinance amending chapter two of the city code of the city of Orlando entitled administration by amending section 2.38 to clarify when mayor pro temps shall be elected, providing for codification, severability, scrivener's error and effective date.
Move to approve.
Ooh, you got some motions and seconds over there on the left side. Motion by Commissioner Burns. Second by Commissioner Sheen. Um I don't have any cards for public participation. Oh, I do have a card?
Yes. Moana Gelsner, if you can please step up to the podium.
I printed this one to make sure I didn't get left off. Moana Gelsa, 815 Hill Street. Um oh, put the wrong thing down. Okay, sorry, Mayor Dye. You started. Okay. I'm gonna just say this. Uh reason why I'm speaking on this is I am very concerned about transparency. I would ask that of some kind of way that when you make that selection, that the public is not charged to find out what the spending uh patterns of all the commissioners and their assistance. And if they're staying within budget of the $150,000 because I think if we are provided that and you're provided that information, most likely you'll make make the best decision for the community who should be their next pro temp. So I would definitely want that to be added in, that you request that and that for transparency, the community can get it without any cost. But since I have two minutes, spreading of misinformation and hate. I will gladly provide my phone. I was summoned to the O P D to come and get not only. And I do not like.
Okay, this has absolutely nothing to do with this item.
Uh she didn't have the right to attack.
Oh, you can come back. You can come back at general appearance. Turn the mic off. Turn the mic off.
Mother.
Turn the mic off.
Cannot approach you.
Well, you can come back at general appearance. Moana, you can come back. You know the rules. You know the rules. You know the rules. Not used to doing that. You usually don't violate the rules. I don't think we've ever had to do that, but you've never lied and come up and talked about something that's not on the agenda. Mm-hmm.
That's why I speak. I was a child. You have the right to do it. And I'm gonna let you make the decision. I can listen to the incident. So you can turn the cameras off, you can do whatever you want to. You can send the police, like you get one time. I was still right. It was getting my rights. As a senator, to put my time in and say what I needed to do. So in closing there, God, please do not charge the community. But we want to know how much they're spending and especially their staff, their administration. Does it also be within the $150,000? You may have that.
Whatever. Okay, whatever. Okay, number three. Or did we, where are we? Did we vote on that? Yeah. Okay, do we have any additional requests for public participation?
That's all, Mayor.
Okay, um. All right, uh let's see. Motion and a second. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye, aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number three.
Ordinance number 2023 dash 44 in ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida, amending the Lake Highland Preparatory School, main campus, planned development zoning ordinance for property located. on the north side of East Mark Street and on the east and west sides of Highland Avenue, and on the west side of North Yola Drive, and comprised of approximately twenty-two point fifty-three acres of land, to include a master signage and fencing plan, and to amend the special land development regulations of the planned development, providing for amendment of the city's official zoning maps, providing a disclaimer, providing per se verability, correction of scrivener's error, and an effective date.
Move to approve. Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Ortiz. I have no cards for public participation in discussion. Hearing none on favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, and so the motion carries. All right, Ed, could you get us ready for general appearance?
Yes, Mayor, we have thirteen on the list.
Okay, read them off.
Up first is Zachary Moldow, followed by Zachary Culp and Zachary Blair. Zachary Blair, if you can please step up to the podium.
Same rules. State your name and address in three minutes.
Yeah, Delphine Lane, Zachary Blair. Patty, I just want to say that no one respected you more than I did. To be fair.
Okay, you gotta direct your comments to the commission.
I will. To be fair, I waited four and a half years for the truth to come out, what I was told, and it never happened. And my whole life changed. I spent four and a half years going through these records. I quit my job to do this full-time and to dedicate my time to the survivors. So you're not the only one who's affected by this, and I think that's something that you need to acknowledge when you address me directly. Second, you said the city didn't know about the violations, but all of these records show that the city did know. On the night of the shooting, the day of the shooting, Fire Marshal Tim Hughes texted that there were violations inside of Pulse. So the city released a statement yesterday saying there were no violations at Pulse. That's different than we didn't know about the violations at Pulse. That's why we say there's a cover-up, because you keep saying they weren't there. That's not saying that they, that you didn't know about them. It's two different things. So you are covering it up, because there's records showing that there were violations at Pulse. And then you're affecting the current premise liability case by saying that there are no violations at Pulse. Again, the million dollars you're gonna give to the Palmas, it's gonna fund the case. The premise liability case is gonna fund their defense against victims. So you're giving money against the victims to work against the victims while you're saying that you're there to support the victims. No one's even listening. But you, you know, it's heartbreaking to see this happen. I don't want to be here. I didn't want to do this. None of us want to be here and do this.
This is great right here, what we can see.
Okay, well, none of us want to, thank you. None of us want to be here and do this. And, and I don't want to be, I shake, but I'm called, being called a liar and untrustworthy. I've been nothing but trustworthy and telling the truth. And, and I have all the records to show it, you know, and that's, and I'm gonna keep putting them online, because that's what I've been doing for four and a half years. And it's, it's wrong that the city's releasing statements saying that there were no issues at Pulse, when we know that's not the truth, and the survivors can tell you the stories who are in the fricking building, that that's not the truth. And that's all.
Madam Clerk.
Up next is Keenan Carter, followed by Tiara Parker, and then Barbara Fraser.
Come on up to the mic.
Keon Carter, one of the Pulse nightclub survivors. I'm gonna size everything y'all heard today from everybody else. I just need y'all to focus on me right now. I do thank you guys for considering to buy the property, because seven years is seven years too long. First year when this all was thought, thought about, we were included. Somewhere in the midst, we got set to the side, and they chose to choose one mother and a few employees that worked there and started saying that, oh, we talked to all the families and the all the survivors, and now we're making the decision. I'm blessed to be here today. But there's forty-nine mothers that don't have children here today. At least give them the opportunity to say how or what this memorial is gonna look like. I don't care about nobody else, at least the forty-nine mothers. I'm tired of everyone, including y'all a little bit, excuse me, because it's, it's a lot of lies coming from everywhere. I'm a survivor. I've been sitting from a wheelchair. I'm standing here today in front, and I've been attentive for seven years, watching everybody sitting back, lying, stealing, money-grabbing politicians that sit on your, on your, on your board, sitting here calling themselves celebrities after Pulse. What kind of, what is this? Is our life, if our life is a mockery, the kids that died, are they, are they some kind of gang to this community? Because if that's the case, I need all y'all to get off y'all seats, and we need to put new people here. I'm tired, and it's not, it's not to come at y'all like that or disrespectful or anything like that, but we want somebody that's gonna fight for us. I'm a black man from the paramo streets, Miss Regina. I came to you twice. I met you at a church on Rio Grande. All you did to me was stand up in front of a camera, did this, and got out my face. I saw you at, off the corner of Bruin and Columbia at the store where everybody come to get breakfast in the morning. I stopped you and I talked to you personally and tried to get your information. You said, just call my office. No, I want a personal bond with you. If you're the lady that's supposed to be representing my neighborhood where I grew up. Can y'all take a moment and sit down with me and have a conversation? I never spoke with you, you, you or anybody up here, no disrespect. But y'all got, you guys keep claiming that you're speaking to survivors and victims' families. Can we talk, y'all, can we have control of our story, our voice, he heard? That's all I'm asking. And if I can't, if the survivors can't do it, just the victims' mothers. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Zachary has arrived. If you can, please step up to the podium.
Hi, Zachary Culp, seven one four Nineteenth Street. First, I'd like to say that my topic is not related to the Pulse nightclub. Would I be able to move my topic till after that to let all these passionate people speak first?
That, that's passed. This is general appearance, so I don't know who else has what subjects.
Hey, can I allow myself to be put last? What'd you say?
Yeah, you can go last.
Okay, thank you very much.
Tiara Parker.
I'm just wondering if you can hear me?
Yes.
I, I think it's at this point of where I am as being a survivor of the shooting and a family member of one of those killed. I think when y'all see us, y'all see us as these vulnerable individuals who went through something so traumatic, and because they went through something so traumatic that we have no brain for ourselves, and that we can't seem to think for ourselves and understand what's exactly going on. And following these stories, seeing these public records, these documents, the approvals of some of you sitting up here today, it is behooving and it's downright disrespectful. It's disrespectful to the victims. It's disrespectful to the survivors. It's disrespectful to the families of the survivors. Like, we have to, seven and a half years later, you know, we're now talking about buying this club, and y'all saying y'all keep working with these survivors and families, but y'all don't really understand how big the survivors and families actually are of this shooting, and that's the important part to remember here. The amount of the devastation that I witnessed being there that night in that club and not being able to, not knowing which way to go, trying to get out of there when the shooting happened, is clear that it, the renovations of the building just really hindered a lot for us. I dealt with survivor's guilt, because I felt like if I'd have just turned, if I'd have knew which way to go or turned the right way, I'd have been able to save a few. If that's, that's, I went through that for years. We know how to act, we know how to advocate for ourselves, but we, we know that it's, it's gonna take more, and you guys aren't really listening and understanding, and that's one of my biggest issues here. I think that, again, like I said before, I'm just gonna continue to advocate for a criminal investigation be done, and I don't have nothing else to say, because I necessarily don't trust the City of Orlando. Y'all have failed on other aspects time and time again as well, so how can we trust you? What, what gives you, what gives you the grounds for us to, to secure the trust of us to be able to trust you? I'm done.
Barbara Fraser. Cynthia Harris, followed by Yoli Centron and Messine Isom.
Cynthia Harris, twelve Channan Avenue, Orlando. Elections have consequences, and elections also have agendas. And I, I find it very interesting that now, after seven years, you want to talk about finding money to buy a building. And when you're talking about finding money, I hope that you would think about finding money, because we've been having problems with nine one one for over a year now. When we call nine one one, it rings and rings and rings and rings, and no one answers. Can y'all find some money to hire somebody to answer the phones? Because if we can't get assistance through simply dialing three numbers, how do we feel safe? How do we trust our government? How do we call on you for help when we need you the most? I have spoken to the chief of police. He's aware of the situation. Have also spoken to our fire chief. He's aware of the situation. And now I'm speaking to you, because this is ongoing and it's problematic, that we can't reach anyone for help. I'm at a point now that if, if I need help, if it's a medical emergency, if I'm conscious, I want anybody within the sound of my voice to know that I need you to take me wherever I need to be. If my house is burning down, I need my neighbors to understand. They need to get their fire hoses and try to save my home from being burnt down. You're finding money to buy a building. And I agree with you, Commissioner Gray, when you say eminent domain would be the proper step. I applaud you for standing up. I also applaud you, Commissioner Stewart, for saying that the city needs to own the own property, not own the property. They shouldn't own the property. The people should own the property. I would love for you all to raise the money, but I really would love to know where you're gonna get this money from, especially when our emergency communication systems are flawed. We're crying out for help here. Nine one one is more important than buying a building right now. Because there, there, there's just too many things going on. Every time you turn on the news, there's a police chase, there's a shooting, there's something that is detrimental to our community. So when you're finding money, please find some money for us first. Thank you.
Yoli Centron. Messine Isom.
Messine Isom, nine twelve Bruton Boulevard, been here since nineteen forty-three. Today, I'm gonna speak with you about homeless, crime.
Yes, I want to pull the mic down just a little.
Did you hear what I said? I'm looking for you all to spend money for a building, a medical rehab building for the homeless. We have people all over this city living everywhere, on the grounds, in the street. Nobody's talking about them. Talking about a building, let's look at letting Orlando be the city beautiful it was in nineteen forty-three when we moved here, because it's not pretty right now, especially in District Five and Six. The other thing I'm concerned about, what Ms. Harris said, nine one one, I called the other day. We have dogs that are taking over our community. We have people that are buying property and turning it into women's houses. Right today on Bruton Boulevard, one house, the dogs are so bad that people cannot get their mail. UPS, I mean, post office told them on Bruton Boulevard, they are not gonna deliver their mail. This is ridiculous. We are fighting dogs now in District Six. We don't have a dog park, but I understand you have them downtown and on East Orlando, where these people can take their dogs to run. The other thing, violations, code enforcement, they violate some people and they don't violate others. We have a building sitting on Bruton Boulevard, ragged and ragged, owned by a church, and it's still sitting there, and now we got big old tractor trailers parking over there. Bruton Boulevard is like Daytona racetrack. I said at a person's home today, fly, we have talked about Bruton Boulevard over and over and over, and no one is doing anything about it. Every once in a while, there's a motorcycle police out there for one day. We are not getting what we should get in the city of Orlando for certain areas in this city. And listen to the man talk about restaurants downtown. We like to have restaurants in all, in District Six. Beautiful. I gotta go out all over town to find a nice restaurant. Nothing is being brought in these areas. It's all downtown. I don't go downtown, because you got too many police down there. That means there's a problem downtown. We don't have anything to bring our family members down. I've traveled. Downtown is friendly. They have places for you to bring your children. They have recreation. And then you eat and tie them out. Let's look at that. You all are not looking at the future. Five hundred years, two, a hundred years from now, you're looking at what's going on now. Please do something more than what you're doing, because I'm gonna keep coming down and speaking until you do it. Thanks.
Madam Clerk.
Up next is Felicia Hunter, followed by April Jacobs.
Felicia Hunter. I just want to say accountability speaks a lot. Also, disrespecting a mother who is grieving, and you already have had experience with that. Okay, I missed the part where you basically said that she was lying, but I was there at the meeting. First of all, the lady was in the wheelchair, and she also has a caregiver. Okay, second of all, you are supposed to be a little bit more, a step ahead, understanding that the lady is in mourning, because she doesn't have answers. Nobody will give her answers with what really happened to her daughter. because she doesn't have answers. Nobody will give her answers with what really happened to her daughter. No one. And you're the boss to make sure that those answers can get done, and you have not done that. Accountability speaks a lot. Now, I will tell you this, and I promise, because I, I am a person that works in the community. And your, your, your time will be coming back up for people to revo- to vote for District Five, Regina Hill. I will do this and I will do that. Your accountability stinks. You add a negative in our community. And you don't have to say anything. You're not supposed to. Appreciate it. You should have done that with that lady. You should have done that with the lady that's in mourning. Okay, you can do it with me. Me and you can go head to head. I'm not in a wheelchair and thank God, none of my kids are dead yet. But if they was and you done that, you reached over, I know this, I saw it with my own eyes. You reached over in the wheelchair and said that your, your family and the pastor needs to apologize to me. Who do you think you are? You put your pants on the same way everybody else does, okay? You, you know, you're not welcome. You're gonna be, I'm gonna say thank you when you do not, and I promise, in everything, all my life that I live, I'll go to every church and in the community and make sure that they know who you really are in so many ways, okay? Not this, not this time, baby. You, this is your last time up here going, thank you.
April Jacobs. Chantelli Bennett.
Hello, Council. Hello, Council. Chantelli Bennett withdrawing, um, address for security purposes, right? Okay, um, I wanna first piggyback on just what was said earlier about um, restaurants and management. What I wanna, um, mem- man, with management is that you do need to expand the east side of your districts. Um, you could, um, with hotels and restaurants. The corridor of Orlando has been babysitted too long. You need to expand it. I just wanna suggest that, I also wanna just suggest that fashion squirm all is becoming a hazard. Y'all figure out what to do with that. That, that's a hazardous place right now, and you can make that a hotel. But my reason I'm here today is I wanna talk about, I'm here to piggyback, I'm here to discuss Pulse. Now, Pulse, I'm gonna tell you, on the twenty-ninth, I went to court. Your detectives were in my courtroom, but the same thing, I already filed, I had, I got another complaint on them. Again, still following me around. I went to Tallahassee to chase down Governor Nansen. OPD was in Tallahassee when they should have been in Orlando. Okay, with that said, the night of the Pulse shooting, the night of the Pulse shooting, the reason why OPD and Orange County Sheriff's Office was not able to sustain the, a time allowed to save those lives is because they followed me to Charleston, South Carolina. So all you waiting around, you, somebody said this, they said four years ago, you, um, you stopped your job for four years, you don't want answers? I'm just, and I must apologize to you guys that I sat here for seven years and didn't even say anything about it. Your whole staff was in Charleston, South Carolina. That's where they were at, chasing behind me in Charleston, South Carolina. That's why they were unable to get those, not those, but the fallen victims to medical care on time. And I apologize to every family for not bringing that issue and that awareness and time. But I really feel right now that it is accountability. Two weeks after I came here and told y'all that I'm getting tired of OPD and I've been saying it for years and years and years, and you just start ignoring it. Eight days, you know, like eight days ago, I just walked up past Pulse. Eight days ago and I sat there and I say, well, but this is what, you know, Pulse was. Eight days ago that I walked by and I said, well, if you did not, um, Paul, I oppose Pulse, even being a monument. I feel like when you roll past Pulse on the weekend, if your body didn't swing, your head didn't bump, you didn't have a pulse. And I think that life need to be put back in the city, and the city should big Pulse, a place where they can reopen the club and add more jobs there.
Up next is Luanne Gelsa, followed by Zachary Culp. And those are our last speakers, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Luanne Gelsa, eight one five Hills Street. Today I speak on several topics. But the first, I wanna go on record and say again, in the interest of transparency, can the city of Orlando waive the six hundred thousand dollar public request fee that Zach received to get information? Emailed it. We have proof. Six hundred thousand dollars. Waive that, please. Or ask the question, we'll send it to each and every one of you. I know what it's like to get a twenty-five thousand dollar one, but not six hundred thousand dollars. In the domain, kudos, Commissioner Gray. You did it for the soccer stadium, but then you rescinded it. So for public use, in the domain is the perfect thing to do in this case. Because this will be a public venue for the public. Why now? Statue of Limitation is over, but in writing, it was, it, it was spoken by the city attorney that you could go after the, the, uh, family. We need that in writing, that we can continue to sue. But when I was so beautifully interrupted by the mayor in reference to the family of the late Yo-Yo, I said the mother is a paraplegic, meaning she can only move from the neck up, right here up. She cannot approach anybody. You must come to them. So I say this about the family. And OPD, because I was on a Zoom call, it's simple. The way we treat people shows, showing compassion goes a long way. The family have been told by detectives, they too busy. They have been talked to in a derogatory way. It's unbelievable what the family is going through, but the one thing I've learned and you have taught me, city council and others, get that independent autopsy, and we did. So so quickly to make judgment, hoping it'll go away. No. So quickly to say you want an apology, hoping it would be the weakest link, has fired us up. So I, I, I am by inviting you all to balloon release and a candlelight vigil where the late Yo-Yo met her demise and walk to us, walk with us to OPD this Friday. So y'all have a wonderful and beautiful day, but waive the six hundred thousand dollars. Waive the six hundred thousand dollars. Waive the six hundred thousand dollars.
Is there a Shannon DeWitt in the audience?
Sure, Commissioner.
I just wanna clarify something. I don't know if you guys understand. The problem with eminent domain is that you go to court. That doesn't mean we just take the land. We still have to pay what the court figures is worth. And with that comes cost of the city, and if we lose, which is the other side, then we have to pay with the new legislation up in Tallahassee. We have to pay for their cost too. It may not end up being more expensive than two million dollars. No, no, yes it is. Yes it is. That's, that's the problem. It is. No, 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 it is. Not the fees, but the money, if the court decides, you still have to pay them the two million dollars.
Okay, we've had enough.
Zachary Culp.
Zachary Culp, seven one four nineteenth street. I hate to change the subject, but I want to bring another issue to light. Uh, this is the red light camera and the red light camera projects in the community uh, that I found has not been too efficient. And I'd like to start with the Florida Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles. Uh, this packet here is a study from the last five years. It includes statistics for, uh, the crashes. Um, and NOVs, which are, uh, notice of violations, that is what is sent to people when they do run a red light. Last year in, uh, twenty, between twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, there were six hundred and fifty-one thousand NOVs paid with an additional two hundred and sixty-four thousand UTCs, which are issued in person. That equates to over a hundred and forty-four million dollars in revenue. In the past, uh, ten years since, uh, twenty thirteen, the state of Florida has, uh, reaped in over a one billion dollars in revenue. Now, regarding crash statistics, uh, last year, so this is table ten. Um, you can find this statistic online. This takes into account for crashes before red light cameras were installed in select intersections and after red light cameras were installed in those intersections. The before number crashes were recorded at fourteen thousand, after red light cameras were installed, fifteen thousand, seven hundred and ten, an increase of seventeen hundred. That's a fourteen percent increase. Now, I can go back year after year, for example, twenty twenty-one, uh, twelve thousand before installation, thirteen thousand crashes after installation, twenty twenty, ten thousand before installation, eleven thousand after installation. You can go back year after year and find that accidents in these intersections where these red light cameras are being installed are actually increasing. Now, you might say, well, hold on, that doesn't necessarily mean that this is an issue of just drivers not reacting well and these camera systems being inefficient. And in fact, the department which wrote this recorded two stats for us, even though they say many factors make contribution to the change in number of crashes. These two reasons are, one such factor is the increase in vehicle miles traveled or VMT. The probability of a crash occurring increases if people drive more. That makes sense, but VMT in Florida increased fourteen percent from calendar years twenty twelve to twenty twenty-one. That's in ten years. If you kind of average that out over time, you're looking at a one point five percent increase over time every year in VMT. That does not reflect the twelve percent increase in crashes at these intersections. Now, I'd like to go into a few other studies that were done. This was one in the Miami-Dade County area. During the first year, RLC sites experienced a marginal decrease in right angle turn collisions, minus three percent, but a significant increase in rear end collisions, plus forty percent. That comes from most people slamming on their brakes when they see that yellow light because they don't want that violation, thus resulting in rear end collisions. RLC showed a benefit in reducing RLR-related injury collisions at camera sites after enforcement commenced, yet its trade-off was a large increase in rear end collisions. Any type of collision increase is not a safety factor in our community. Another study, this one from Houston, our study showed no evidence that the cameras reduced the total number of accidents. We estimate the total accidents are reduced by a specific, a statistically insignificant three percent after the cameras were turned off. But our study shows that Houston's camera program was ineffective in improving traffic safety. Electronic monitoring is not the solution. And I have one more here. Uh, this one was from SSRN. We find that cameras changed the composition of accidents, but not, but no evidence in a reduction of total accidents or injuries. Now, states have taken
Okay, you've had your time, so thank you. But if you wanna turn your materials into the clerk, she can distribute it to us.
All right, uh, just real quick, in closing, I would like to say that that this table right here shows that in nineteen ninety-two, New York State of New York first implemented red light cameras. It sparked a drive in the nation to also add more cameras, but as you can see in about twenty twelve, that number started to decline. This table is from the Insurance Institute for Highway Safety. Other states, there's currently eighteen that have banned red light cameras because they know that they're corrupt. And if you look at state senators that were part of those states that banned the red light cameras, they will talk about how it's for corruption and how it's for profit motivation. I don't want Florida to be the last one to join this growing number of communities that are banning red lights. I have faith that Florida and Orlando is gonna join this and be right and stand for justice and stand for liberty. And I don't want them to be last. I want them to be next, and I want the city council to look at this. And I want them to look at the accident increases that show that this is an issue of safety for our community and that it's profit-driven and is i- in fact corrupt. I know everyone at the beginning of this meeting looked up at that flag and said, this is a nation for liberty and justice for all. Nothing about this is for liberty and justice.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, that's, uh, all of our business today. Thank you for your close attention, Commissioners. We stand adjourned.
I've been waiting for this for weeks.